Any other corrections, discussions, additions? We've covered quite a bit. We're not starting until time clock. We have to just change to that time. Is that motion?
I'll make a motion except for minutes of September 22nd, 2014. It doesn't need to be amended because I'm here.
She already said it.
Right.
Okay, second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now, I'm gonna jump off of the agenda for just a second to go into some mail because since we're discussing minutes, I think this has something to do with how we keep our minutes.
Okay.
So this is some new mail that came in yesterday dated September 30th from the Office of the Attorney General. And again, talking about open meeting complaints. And I'm not gonna read the whole thing because it's four pages. But it's talking about, well, this office received two complaints from Paula Lukart on June 4th and June 9th respectively, and another from Suzanne Corbett on June 9th alleging that the Select Board violated the open meeting law. The complaints alleged the Board failed to create and maintain accurate minutes of meetings specifically. Ms. Lukart's first complaint and Ms. Corbett's complaint alleged the Board failed to comply with the Attorney General or our office's order in Open Meeting Law 2014-10 by failing to amend the Board's April 8th, 2013 meeting and its March 10th meeting to include a list of documents used and adequate and correct information about that meeting. The second complaint, Ms. Lukart's second complaint alleged that the Board did not create sufficiently detailed minutes for its February 26th meeting. So I'm gonna jump here to, you all have copies of this, I believe, in your file.
Do you know?
They don't?
I just made some extra copies.
Well, under facts, it says we find the facts, it follows. And in the second paragraph, it says during its February 26th meeting, the Board discussed open meeting law 2014-10, and that was their order and direction that we were taking up, for approximately 30 minutes. Though the Board discussed the decision, it was not read aloud. So there's two parts to these complaints. The first part of the complaint, in their discussion, they have underlined, they have number one, underlined, "The Board complied with our order in Open Meeting Law 2014-10 and properly amended and approved the minutes of the Board's April 8th meeting." And so we did follow, we did follow the order that the Attorney General guided us to. But the second part where the Board did not underline, number two, "The Board did not include sufficient detail in its February 26th minutes, meeting minutes." And twice in this, maybe three times, it talks about, in the first part of the letter, paragraph, is, "Ms. Lukart's second complaint alleges that the Board's February 26th meeting minutes did not adequately reflect the 30-minute conversation." It talked about it on the front page, it talked about the 30-minute conversation, that there wasn't enough information in that. So, in addressing both of them, it says the Board did. And as you read through it, you'll find that we have to go to the Attorney General's website and watch the video on accurate meeting minutes and so forth. But I wonder, since we've just got done discussing minutes, and because of this, since it seems to me to tie directly to the amount of time that we spend on any particular item, I'm feeling like the minute should reflect on everything that we discuss, how long we talk today.
See if you can move.
If it's a two-minute discussion, and it doesn't, I don't think it needs to be with a second. I don't think we have to have stopwatches going. But I think that would be something. So then we can look at it and say, oh, you know, we had a 10-minute discussion and it was two sentences. Or we had a 30-minute discussion, and if it's still two sentences, then maybe that would give us a signal that it needs to be expanded on. Anything back, John?
Do you think it'd be a good idea? We could do that.
Well, I think it's a way to address it when we're approving minutes.
In fact, you were gonna say maintain more succinct sort of topic discussion.
Well, I've...
Keep it to five minutes, so we keep our minutes succinct.
I've said several times that short meetings make short minutes. But there's no way that we're gonna get away with not having lengthy discussions if we're gonna get anything done. I mean, you think that we're asking to do too much?
To like put down how many minutes we spend.
Yeah.
Do you think it might be helpful to review this video first, moving back to the preparation issues? I mean, because they talk about a checklist here, maybe it's something that would be more helpful than that.
Well, what I'm trying to get at is, let's start tonight, at least trying to keep that.
Well, I mean, they're not saying that, you know, knowing the length of the discussion was a problem. It's that the people of the discussion...
So if you see something that's an hour long, it should end up through three pages as opposed to a paragraph. Right. So it gives you a sense as we review minutes along, if it's sufficient detail.
If you spend an hour on the same thing 60 times, you know, it depends on what's left. Well, yeah, we'll have time to review the video, put it out next week.
Well, why don't we start just tonight? Be an actual verb.
Ron, can I say something about it with other committees? Well, listening to this, I was gonna say first what Ron mentioned, that I think it's a good idea, maybe to watch this video. And since there is a video, I didn't know about, I think that it would be good for other committees to also watch it because this comes up over and over again in all sorts of meetings with what actually this needs to be put down and how much of the conversations need to be put down and who says it. I mean, even down to, you know, little things like who votes on what and how much of that has to be reported. I mean, I don't think that it's well-known facts on the committees, what to report on in the minutes. And there's so much changing probably with the requirements that I think it would be a good idea if all the committees got to view the video. And just one last thing, I don't think just putting down the time come up. Like, I know in the Finance Committee, if I take minutes and I said, oh, well, we had a 15-minute discussion, that's not really gonna comply with what they're asking because we have to give more of an overview of what happened in that 15-minute discussion.
That's not the point that I was trying to make. The point was that if you did talk about something for 15 minutes, that you could just refer to that, saying, well, we had seven sentences or, you know, a paragraph on a 10-minute discussion, and we had a 30-minute discussion, you know, probably more was said than one sentence. And it would give us, it would give us a guidepost to go, or give us an idea that maybe something could be expanded upon. But I think it's a very good idea. I think after we review this, we're gonna be able to find that we could have all members go to the website and see it themselves.
It would be very helpful.
I don't know if you were thinking of having movie night, you know?
Well, it wouldn't be a bad idea. Wouldn't be a bad idea because it doesn't, you know, it's not something that just the Select Board has to be concerned about. It's all boards in town really have the same issue to, you know, to be concerned about.
Certainly serving on more than one board like you and I both do, you know, the minutes are woefully lacking.
Yeah, and some people tend to do very, very copious minutes of every word that's said, and some people do short minutes. But if there's regulations that need to be complied with, and there's a video that tells you what and how to comply, I think it would help everybody in town.
All right, all right, let's move on. Tom, you're first up. The idea of having you in is to give us a quarterly kind of update on what you've got done, what you've been doing, what you're planning on, how you're, how much surplus money you're figuring your budget's gonna have. We wanna hear about all those sorts of things.
Okay, well, we've been, it's been a good summer, we've gotten quite a bit of work done. One of the main projects is resurfacing. We've got almost five miles of roads resurfaced this year, which is a pretty good target. Four point one miles were resurfaced using Chapter 90 money and another close to half a mile's used with the winter rapid road recovery program money.
I saw all that asphalt on the warrants yesterday when I signed it, it maybe choked a little bit.
It's very good, yeah. So, of course, there's a lot more work than just paving the road that we're doing. Having shoulder work and cleaning shoulders to prepare for paving and conversion and all that. So that is, there's quite a bit of work involved in that, some centers we've been working on. Shoulders, when you pave roads, typically you may have the edge of the pavement, as you know, that you have to fill in. So that's, we've been, the whole resurfacing project involves multiple other things to go on with it. So we've been working on that, we've been working on some culvert replacement. Well, we've recently were starting to fall straighten the gravel roads. We pretty much got the west side of town done. Couple more roads in there, mowing, we've been spending a lot of time mowing. All the other various little, little things to happen, cleaning culverts. It's supposed to be summer, earlier in the summer, we had a lot of tree rains, rain, trees, all this stuff like that. Back there was some of the, we started keeping up with that, and we do want to recently do something like that.
I told you where the bad drains were.
Yeah, that's true. So as far as the Highway Department, budget-wise or funding-wise, we're sitting in good shape.
Yep, still have money left in the Chapter 90 projects.
There's still money left, yep. Considering possible chip seal jobs or some type of recycling job on Williamsburg Road next spring, that's one of the next things I'm looking at. I really wanted to get to it this year, but we're not going to. With so much...
You have the chip seal over the top of the blacktop that's already, right, because that's on the cap.
It is. But I wanna preserve that, I wanna preserve that pavement. That's, we can all remember how bad Williamsburg Road was once, it's a big effort to get to where it is now. Preserve that as well. Some type of pavement preservation is on those roads, is one of the next things on the line.
Snap, that would, we're discussing that in context with the Chapter 90 project.
Correct. So, I just wanted to mention on winter roads, obviously, a lot of things that are... There was an increase in salt price this year, $13 a ton, probably just written in papers or something. Concerned with salt sorting goods and salt prices and things like that. It's not, it's at $77.9 a ton now, it was, last year's price was $57.79 a ton. We've seen it at $70 a ton before, it's not, hey, we knew it, hey, but it is a pretty significant increase from last year to this year, so I just wanted to mention that. We planned on, you know, less than that when we did the budget, but we also increased the winter roads appropriation.
About $30,000, $20,000?
Right, I just wanted to make you aware of that increase in price.
It's certainly been purchased, or you have...
No, it's not been purchased yet. So there's a couple points of good news about it, is we have a pretty good supply at home to get started in the year. From last year, we stocked up at the end. The other good news is that sand went down $0.20 a ton. So, that's not much, but...
Probably use a lot more sand than you do salt. Typically, how many tons of salt are you looking at? I mean, I know it's...
700, 780. So, we use 700, some of us use 1,000. When we bid it out, we tell them we've done it.
It went $19 a ton?
13.
13.
I don't, I don't think it's anything to be landed about, but there's an increase. Like I said, we paid that much for salt before.
The increase in salt at 700 tons is half of what we increased when our roads...
There's no way to predict how much we're gonna lose or to know, but...
How much inventory do you have?
Probably, let's see. I'd say 120, 150 ton, so we're in good shape for starting now, so, better than some. My hope is we don't lose any. Let's see.
Hoping isn't always a good strategy, I share.
So, I guess as far as budget-wise or money concerns, my, I think we're in good shape with the accounts of the Highway Department. For the transfer station, I have some concerns there.
Before we get out of the highway, where are we not purchasing this new truck?
It's ordered, the truck, pad and trash is ordered, the body company, that's ordered, the body and all the accessories to go to the body, so...
So we ordered that through the Boston Police Council bid?
Greater Boston Police Council, yes.
I haven't seen anything on what the final numbers stand out to be. Take...
Close to what we, we're pretty much gonna lose all the money that we, I think we had $167,000. That's a good number, we're gonna lose, we're basically gonna lose all of it.
But that, that's a competitive bid for the entire state.
Yeah, yeah, I'm very happy with the price. It's, I was at a meeting just the other day with a Tri-City Highway Super Transit Association meeting, and we're spending more, of course, sometimes we're doing, it's hard to compare apples to apples for some old man waves, some old man four-wheel drive, but an old town road just recently got a truck that's $236,000, so, but it's, you know, it's not the same truck, so...
Ready to go?
Sorry, before you move off of the highway and the salt, I gotta put a catch-up because I haven't been here, but was there anything ever further discussed about sidewalks?
Sidewalks we're working on, we're working on. I've been having discussions, you're on my list to have a discussion with, and I'm hoping that by the end of the month, we can come up with some kind of plan on how we're gonna do it. In my mind, I'm really not thinking that the Highway Department needs to be...
I have a question on highway too. Smith and Brook, are we with that?
Um, we're moving on pretty well. Time Bond is still, actually, we're in the permitting process now, preparing to permit through the Conservation Commission. Probably have to go through the Energy Corps, whatever.
So reconstruction next year?
Next year.
Thanks, so you'll get us a copy, so please, you can feel well performed on what you're spending on this truck and the components?
On the truck?
You'll get us that printout, what's been committed to?
Yeah. So the transfer station, still, I know we talked a few times about this, but going back to the DEP requirements that they asked us to do, as far as cleanup and compliance and some of the various regulations. So that's where my concern is about financially. Recently, got the oil recycling area cleaned up and the oil tank pumped out and that. I don't have it invoiced yet because we had problems, they were supposed to email me one, but I don't know what happened. They mailed it to the National Transfer Station, of course. There's no, no mail, maybe. But I know the quote was $1,975. I have no reason to believe that it won't be very close to that.
And that was to get rid of the waste oil?
Right.
That was in the one tank, or?
It was in the one tank, there was also some in drugs surrounding the tank.
Where does that go?
Not sure where it went, it was, Crew Harbors took it away and disposed it. $750 for disposing.
Wow.
So...
Is that included in what I'm considering? Is that included in making somebody go?
Yes. I'm sorry, was that loud?
Sir, can't hear.
See, I saw, the $1975 included the pumping it out, the hogging and disposing.
Total cost of the whole thing. So is there any way that the waste oil at the transfer station can be used for anybody that has a waste oil burn?
Yes, that's typically what we've been doing, but what happened is we got too contaminated. So that couldn't be. So we needed to pump it out, clean up the area, and stay it fresh, basically, is what we're trying to do there.
How do you know it's contaminated?
It had to be tested. The Clean Harbors sent a crew up and took samples, they took it to a lab and tested it and found those PCVs in it and there was whatever other things were in it.
So how do you...
There's water.
How do you prevent that in the future?
Uh, I'll get to that in a second.
Okay.
So the other, the other issues at the transfer station that some of the DEP requirements asked us to do, we're addressing, and part of it is post-closure environmental monitoring is what it's called. Post-closure meaning since we closed the landfill. So Time Bond has given us an estimate to perform those tasks, and that's $11,000.
Now, we closed that about 25 years ago.
Right, but we're supposed to, before my time, had to do with the transfer station. But Time Bond came in years ago, there was insulation of, test monitoring wells, groundwater, and gas. Supposed to test surface water, supposed to test water in the East Branch, I think it is, of the Smith and Brook, and some local, it wasn't that time, one local well, but now there's a couple more of those. We have not really kept up with that as a town. These pestilences, it's up the wrong way, so we need to get caught up in that. They also want us to do a corrective actions alternative analysis, which is analyzing what remedial actions we may have to do there, which might be none, but it could be things such as cleaning up the area, making the surface less impervious, removing trees, changing the slope, making a, removing the trees, back to removing trees, but making that a grass, sort of a grass areas mowed a couple times a year, possible chain link fence around the entire facility. There's several, there's like 11 possible suggestions that they gave. But they're requiring that a professional...
Engineer.
Engineer come up with a plan. I'm not sure exactly, with the DEP, so far we've been satisfying them along the way somewhat. And some of us, they seem to be willing to let be. Like the trees, for example, might not be such an issue as long as we can satisfy them on some other ends of certain things. But we may have to actually do this study to get that fairer. It probably would be a good idea to get it done. The problem with it is that Time Bond's, I don't know if you should call it the problem, but the Time Bond's quote to get everything done for that corrective actions alternative analysis is $19,500. So to do both of those things at the same...
So the left half of that one covers...
Monitoring wells.
Testing.
Monitoring for gas, groundwater, surface water, brook, and it seems, I think we found that, we have found three wells within 1,000 feet that they're asking us to, to do an analysis of that water. Private wells.
They're all upstream.
Yeah, well, one, yeah, possibly.
Is that a year each done? How many year?
No, I don't think it would be a year.
The monitoring is just a one-shot deal?
I think it's gonna have to be done more, I'm not sure the frequency of it, not yearly, but it may have to be done more. Obviously, it's gonna be done more often than we've done it.
When was the last time we did it?
I don't even...
11 in 19, it used to be 30.
I can't find it. It doesn't, it sounds like you remember it, but it was...
Right.
It makes me wonder if it costs us about $90,000 or whatever we appropriated, and if it's cost $30,000 to do this, you know, a lot of this is gonna be ongoing stuff, it kind of makes me almost wonder what a curbside pickup would cost. But you'd still have to do the post-closure testing.
Right.
Has Eric Weiss been a resource on this?
The trouble, Eric Weiss has got a new job now. So, we're kind of in a little bit of flux with the HRMC at this point.
So, no one's taken his place yet, or?
No.
Is there recycling going on?
Yes, yes, everything's going on, but, um, back to your question on about how do we address this in the future? I met again last Thursday, I guess it was, with the DEP again down there, and we keep having these ongoing problems. And it's mostly to do with the oil, the paint recycling, electronics recycling, and tires as well, but that's not so bad. So, one of the things that we talked about, and one of the things that might be worth thinking about or discussing, is getting a second attendant there on the weekends. Because what's happening is, it's just a disaster.
Especially closer you get to closing time.
Yeah, and it's just, we went through the tank the other day, had two guys down there from the Highway Department, we've been, you know, there's a lot of empty cans, there's, which doesn't need to be there, they can be, they can be just put in a compactor.
Wait.
There's oil, yeah. And the oil, you've probably all seen what happens with the oil situation, that's why we got this problem. There's people, obviously, just dumping things other than wastewater over there. The things we find, I mean, we find like paint trays and paint rollers and chemicals, things that just don't belong there. Kind of mop, there's a mop in there.
Yes.
And we got the same type of problem with the electronics, the bulbs, the fluorescent bulbs in that area. That's really a bad issue right now. I had Viola come up to, they were gonna, I thought, clean it all out, but they said that they couldn't because there's too many broken bulbs, there's too many batteries, so now we're gonna have to probably get some containers, they're gonna, we're gonna, a company like Viola, they sent us some containers, mostly pails. We're gonna have to package all that stuff up ourselves, and then someone come take it away. I think one of the biggest problems is no one's monitoring these areas, and things just are getting left that shouldn't be left there, things are not being properly placed where they should be, such as in the fluorescent bulb area. There is containers that we have for cardboard tubes, like you can put your fluorescent bulbs in there, but that's just not happening. They're just throwing them in that shed, some break, nothing's getting cleaned up.
How about the appliances and that sort of thing, what's happened?
The appliances haven't been so much of a problem.
You can get somebody to pick those up?
Yeah. So, I don't know, I've, you know, I've talked to Phil several times about the situation, and he's, I think what happens is on weekends, he gets quite busy, and he just doesn't, can't monitor the whole area.
Yeah, the only time he's not busy on Sunday I know is the first half hour.
Right. So, that's.
Not that I make it there in the first half hour.
But that's, that's what I've been, I've been thinking about this a lot. I think we even had this conversation before, one time, maybe a budget hearing or something like that. I think we're gonna have to really consider getting a second attendant there if we want to continue all the recycling programs that we have in place.
So, that would cost us about an extra $5,000 a year?
It would cost, well.
Certainly a bit more than that.
If we were to do Saturday and Sunday, eight hours Saturday and five hours Sunday, that would be $8,600 a year. I say five hours Sunday, the transfer station's only open four hours Sunday, but I'd like to have an extra hour.
To dump it off.
To clean up and tend to things after they close the gate and tend to whatever means you tend to do. Because I know, we all probably know, we've all been there, quarter to 12 on Sunday, and it's a madhouse, there's no way they can just, you can't just, we're getting ourselves into these issues with the DEP, and we continue to go down this road, and one of the other issue besides having a second attendant is the other thing is we can't just close the gate at noon on Sunday and walk away, because there's people there right up until then, you know? Needs to be time after that to tend to some cleanup issues and tidying up and whatnot.
Ricky, before you throw your shoulder out, raising your arm.
It seems like it needs a whole bigger discussion. But, you know, as far as like educating townspeople through news or through something going, being handed out at the dump, but also I was thinking, one, I've been to other recycling centers where they, there's a number of people, either volunteer or working, and they actually sell stuff that people bring in to make some money to keep them open. The other thought that I had is that has anyone ever thought about maybe another town locally who perhaps, and I don't have any clue, that have gone through some of these regulations and might have more proper ways to dispose of some of this stuff that we could hook into, and perhaps people could pay a little bit to dispose of these kind of items in someone else's dump? Do we already gone through that?
I believe that's the reason we pay the dues to belong to HRMC, the regional waste management, the Air Waste Association.
Yeah, and people do pay now.
But maybe there's somebody that's already complied with some of these DEP regulations in their dumps, like Buckland or Shover, I have no idea, that instead of bringing them here where we might have to pay a lot of money, maybe we could bring them to another place that already has these regulations.
Or send them to another place.
Send them, bring them, however, that already have this done.
Send what?
Well, maybe someone wants to dump paint cans on a certain day, go to a different dump who already has the DEP regulations in place. I mean, I have no idea if it's possible, but I think it's something to definitely look into.
I bet it is possible. I know how, we would probably, when that is, we would probably charge them a lot of money to bring it, and I'm afraid too much of it would end up on the side of the road.
Uh, you're right about the educational part, we've been, we've done that, we have flyers, we're handing out, we put up signs, I don't know, we put up a sign that says metal only, and people throw wood in there.
But I'm talking more in terms of like, some, an article written in the Asheville News that says, you know, taxes are gonna be raised if this keeps on going, because we can't do it, the DEP has regulations, we have to follow it, we're gonna be paying, you know?
Probably a couple times a year, there ought to be a reminder on proper dump etiquette.
Yeah, because if people feel as if they're being told, you know, informed and can make more informed choices, then it might make that part for Phil a little bit easier when they get to the dump.
What can we do with the waste oil? You said there was a way to dispose of the waste oil without paying a couple thousand dollars to bring it out?
Yeah, we typically do. We have a local person that takes it, and that's worked out pretty well for years, it just got to this point where.
And the key to that is documentation, right? Documenting how many gallons and where it goes?
It needs a lot of documentation, but the other key is that people only dump waste oil in there, not antifreeze and not whatever else.
And even if you have some, an attendant there watching it, how do you know what that person has in their bucket? It's all mixed up together with the oil, you know? It's tough to.
Could still have some, there still could be some difficulty to it, but if there was someone there watching it, it would be better than.
Yeah, less, give me less.
And you can make sure that they dump it in there and dispose of their empty container. What happens now is they just leave stuff all over the place there.
Yeah. Here's a question for you. In Aristonbury, I used to have one of those furnaces. What if people just brought it to them? They don't want the liability of that, or the mess associated with that?
I couldn't answer that question without talking to them first.
No, I mean, just, if they had the container of it.
The key to all of that is documentation.
Right.
Is documentation, especially when it turns into any amount of volume. I mean, there was an article in the paper about a relatively moderate-sized trucking program that was burning their own waste oil. They were all set up to be environmentally, you know, just right, and then yet they got fined because they didn't document how many gallons they took out of truck A to put into the waste oil.
Well, it is handy at the transfer station, bringing your light bulbs, bringing your oil. I mean, you go there once, you know, every two weeks or once a week, and you bring all your waste, I mean, it's a waste site, right? So, we should be responsible for our waste in some manner, shape, or form.
Well, that's mine, that's the question that somebody has to ask, so I'll ask it. If it costs so much to manage it and dispose of it, should we just stop the electronics and the waste oil?
We're gonna go somewhere, where are we gonna go?
I know Buckland and Shover and other towns have, we dig it up like two or three times a year, you can come down and pay like $10 for refrigerator, $5 for microwave or something like that, I don't know the prices, but, and truck home, you just take it right down there. Paint cans.
Yeah, there's other ways to do it. There's programs, you can do lots of math, you can accept stuff, or whatever, we do accept things all the time. And to say, we have this issue, but I will say that Asheville is also a very responsible town about recycling. In the HRMC towns, we are one of the top, top towns for the most recycling that's happening. And so, there's some good and bad to this, it's just, somehow we need to manage it, I think.
How, on the waste oil, how long does it take to fill the tank? I mean, should there be a routine regardless of how much is in it every three months it gets empty, or what's?
Right, and that's, um...
I mean, if there was 200 gallons in it and you got to have it that it wasn't contaminated, it's better than waiting until it were 400 gallons and somebody did it.
And you were, right, I agree with that. And typically, what we've done is wait till it's basically full, and then we have it pumped out, but that's another, good suggestion, and maybe a better policy to start doing a more routine basis, whether it's half-full or full of it.
They charge a single amount whether it's full or not, or is it by the gallon?
We, before we had all this contamination problems, all these problems, we were getting rid of it for free.
Yeah.
We just, this is just like a one-time cleanup to try and get, I wanted to get back to.
Ground zero.
Ground zero, staying over.
But Tom, how would you know that from ground zero, you would stay at ground zero? Because you don't really know where those PCBs came from, or where the paint came from, or where the other contaminants came from. So, unless you're testing every person's oil that comes to that place to get disposed of it, how do you know that you're gonna stay at ground zero once it's cleaned up?
Well, this is one of the problems that we're talking about, you don't know.
Is there any kind of test?
So, what, it sounds like you're saying the first step would be is to have somebody monitoring and sit, they can bring it, and if an attendant was there, they would be the one to inspect it and dump it into the tank.
But how would they know, Tom?
They're not gonna know, I mean, the only way to do it is to have a lab test.
They'd know.
Yeah, at least somebody there.
Hopefully, somebody that knows.
There's certain things you can tell, you can tell, like you can tell it's water.
Right.
And antifreeze, that's some of our biggest problems.
If someone mixes the two together, can you tell?
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll separate pretty well.
You can tell, someone's there, and the other thing is just keeping the place cleaned up, getting rid of the empty drugs, not letting them just leave full drugs there that are spilling and.
So, maybe instead of having to hire a second attendant, maybe the first Sunday of every month is oil and paint and whatever day. No trash, just the oil and paint, and that's what the attendant does that day. Now, you wouldn't have to hire another person, you just have to train the citizens to do it that day.
I think there's several possibilities and several, I'm just trying to fill this out, like I said, like I said in the beginning, I think it's worthy of discussion.
Yeah.
I think you have, I can certainly foresee some serious issues if you tell people that they can't bring their trash. We've had.
You know, change. Especially if changes happen, people just have to get used to changes, that's all. But it's hard to, on the days that it is open for trash, people leave, I've seen that place be a mess with drugs. Well, we'd have to figure out some sort of security for that, yeah. We'd have to figure out something, it can't just be an open carriage. I think getting it to ground zero and cleaning it up makes it a respectable place, and people will respect it more too, you know, I, they.
Hope so.
Only if the people help get to that place to begin with will they respect it. If it's just done for them, then forget it.
Yeah.
Well, I think, I think the other important thing to remember is that if you say that it's once a month, that doesn't mean that somebody isn't, especially if you only have one attendant, that people aren't gonna drop stuff off.
Outside.
Even outside, if it's a secured area.
Well, those are the same people that are gonna disrespect it a lot.
Because that's an issue, I mean, like I say, we put, at the metal bin, for just an example, I think we have three signs there already. Metal, there's highlighted and everything, and people put wood in there. It's a simple play, I guess they feel that.
Are you done with the demolition box down there? No more demolition for the winter, or?
No, it's still there.
So, as of the warrant we signed yesterday, we know 25% through, and we've got, we're at 15% expended.
The transfer station?
Transfer station.
October.
The appropriation was $18,000.
We carried the money forward because we knew we had these issues ongoing. Like I said, we're in some lock, and maybe we'll get it through all this with the money we have available, but I wanted to bring it to your attention because, like I said back in the beginning, when you started talking about the transfer station, that's my one place I'm concerned about funding-wise, where we could find ourselves in some trouble. To get all this accomplished, I don't know if we'll have enough money.
We don't have, we don't have any money to do the engineering.
Well, we have, we have some money, we have our operating money, we talked about using operating money, because this is an operational thing, that's why we carried some money forward.
Right.
We saw this coming, so.
But if you're saying, if you wanted to have an attendant.
Oh, that's.
That would gobble up a pretty good share of it.
Right.
An attendant would basically walk between those areas. Like an attendant who would basically walk between those areas.
I think the attendant would take care of the, the oil, the paint and the whole shed area over there. You don't have to worry too much about the, we don't have to deal with the cans like that. That's taken care of.
The lumps.
The pans, bottles, cans. Yeah, they take care of that one themselves. With the oil, the paint and then the electronics and the bulbs, fluorescent bulbs and that shed, that area there. We'd have to probably, it's gonna be, it would be a whole new system. We'd have to find a way for the two attendants to work together and maybe come up with something, but maybe one day one attendant does that and they swap back and forth or, I don't know. Maybe they switch during, in the winter they may have to switch a couple of times during the day because if it's real cold out or whatever.
Yeah, you can't figure out an attendant really at the shack.
No, you can't.
Because people are constantly asking, you know, where do I put my pizza boxes or where do I do this? Styrofoam, where does it go?
Yeah, and someone has to run the compactor and someone should really should be there. You can't, obviously if you're running the compactor, you have to be there and someone should be there to make sure someone falls in. And the busman and all the other thing, we're, we're collecting money there. Someone has to be there to do that because if no one's there, the person might decide to just leave.
It's easy to do. Brian?
Just a, just another thought here. Multiple cam or video surveillance systems are incredibly cheap these days, I've noticed. BJ's just, how serious you gotta be, but just the fact that there's a camera there would have a big effect on the violators, I think.
I think that's a good point, but my first reaction to it is that they're clients, sort of thing, you know? If they need some assistance. I mean, I know just standing at the compactor, how many people ask for directions on where things should go and that sort of thing. And I know even it says it on the sign, you know, somebody needs to tell them and ask for it. What, Ron, what do you, what do you think about this? This is-
I think we have to be responsible. I think if we, personally, I think we have to step up to the plate and do a better job of educating people with the newspaper and with the signs and get our attendants to be more proactive. I, I sometimes think that they need to be a little bit more direct with some of those clients, you know? No, that's, that's a rake. You should really take the metal off the rake and not put the wood in the metal area, you know? Try to educate rather than just let it go, you know? That's my, I, I think you have to be responsible for your waste.
Every time I go down there, fills all over my ass.
Yeah, it's cool. He's never seemed to be too shy about telling people or that kind of thing, but he can't be everywhere at once.
What are your thoughts, Tom?
You know, well, like we're talking about, I think there's more than one possible solution, so I think obviously there is a solution, but-
Well, I think in the operating budget that you have now, that there is money for another tenant. If you feel that would be the best. I mean, it sounds to me like there'd be nothing, no problem with trying it for six months. And, and only having it on the weekend. You really don't have enough traffic there on Thursday that you need.
I think the weekend would be sufficient. Sometimes I wondered about only doing it Sunday, but I'm not sure that would, I'm afraid that what might happen is when the attendant got there Sunday, he'd have so much catch-up work to try to clean up from various things that happened on Saturday that went right.
You'd almost have to have garage doors closing and the whole area off. Nobody can leave anything there. You know, and everybody just, you know, make sure you bring your paint and oil on Thursday.
And one, make sure nobody drops it off in front of the garage.
Yeah.
But do you think that there could be a small fee for people dropping those kinds of things off? That could hopefully pay for a good portion of that new attendant?
There is now, right?
There is fees for things.
Yeah, and there's, there's fees for like if you want computers, I think, or refrigerators. So maybe, maybe a paint can could be fifty cents or a dollar. You know, and so just like someone pays fill money, maybe they could pay or have coupons or something.
They pay, they pay the attendant's money, Ricky, when they put stuff in the demo dumpster and they drop off tires. It all ends up in that same pile of money that gets turned over to the treasury.
Does that run a deficit? That runs a deficit, doesn't it?
What's that?
The transfer station.
Oh, no. I think they're still, I, I didn't compare the numbers last year, but I mean, it was a lot of money generated. I still think the town's taking in twenty five dollars.
You can probably tell you're-
Just one last little thing. If there's gonna be education about this and new signs, of course, we know who can do the signs and choose the great ones. But, you know, even to go into the schools and get the kids educated about what happens to all this garbage that their households throw into the dump, where does it go? I mean, it's like that kind of-
Bottom.
Bottom, bottom up that really ought to be addressed on a big level because it's not just a problem for this, our little town. I mean, this stuff goes somewhere. And that's a big problem too. So dressing it as a holistic problem might be wise.
Well, we're very active. I mean, you know, the amount of recycling and so forth we do, I'm always amazed how fast and how many dumpsters are pulled there. And I know that, you know?
Yeah, Asheville does, really does a really good job of recycling, there's no question of that.
Do you have the number there on the difference between cash and expenditures?
Yep. Um, 2013, the difference was nine thousand forty-eight dollars.
Negative.
Right. We, we had receipts of sixty-one thousand one hundred and sixty-six and expenses of seventy thousand two hundred and fourteen. So that was, typically-
And that includes, well, that obviously includes what? The town hall?
Yes, it does. The two years prior to that, we were at eighty-seven hundred. Most years were, 2006, we, the difference was only one thousand nine hundred. 2009, 2010, we actually had a, we're on a plus side of sixty-two hundred, almost sixty-three hundred.
That'd be trash, yeah.
I can't remember what the reason for that was then, but now, but-
Well, what else?
Would there be time between now and the next Asheville news to have something from the Select Ward, you know, praising the town for doing a good job recycling, but bringing to their attention this issues with the paint and the areas that Tom's bringing up? And if it came from the Select Ward, drawing their attention to it and that it has to be kept, I'll use the word neat and tidy, but it's more than that, it might have some oof if they read it. You know, when they go there, because a new attendant without something out to the public ahead of time is just a new attendant. They don't understand necessarily why the person's there trying to help keep that organized. And then, obviously trying to save money as well and not get in trouble with the P P.
I mean, I understand and it's only the seven, so we know the Asheville news is once a month at the first of the month, so I'm sure there's time to get something in the Asheville news. But my hope would be that maybe they would study the Asheville news more than they study the signs that are up there already. Because there's a lot of signs there, a lot of direction given and they just look at it.
Not, not John's and Heffley's signs.
No, 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 not Gray's.
But Ron, what about Mina writing something? Because she used to write in the news about recycling things and this one might be right up her alley to just kind of get the educational word out. And the more people that have, the more people that see it, the better in the long run.
She has done it, but I really can't speak for her. She'd kill me if I did, so.
There might be an alley that's closed. So, I'll, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to authorize Tom to hire a second attendant to, to help organize and help people understand what they need to do as far as recycling on the weekends for six months. Let's try it for six months and see if it's a meaningful change, et cetera.
So part of that person's responsibility would be some sort of educational component?
Well, an attendant's gonna be quite educational.
I think in terms of, you know, putting something in the news or we're expecting Tom to do that or, or what? How does that work?
I didn't get that far. I was looking for somebody to be at the dump.
Okay, alright. This means seven.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? How many minutes did we spend talking about that? Alright, what else you got? What are we gonna do on that engineer? Do we even get together with somebody at the D E P and ask that we're making some progress? What?
Yeah, I'm in contact with the D E P. I think we need to just do it. And that's where we may run into, um-
I gotta believe that it'd be a bad policy to volunteer to do everything that they want. I would think that you probably should ask them what's the most important.
Well, we need to do the first step, which was the post-sposer environmental monitor. We need to restart with that, which that's eleven thousand dollars. So I think what we really need to do right now is move forward with that and get that done. Get the light bulb situations and everything's taken care of. And where we're gonna land in April, financially, we may, we may find ourselves needing some more money. But I think right now we need to get this done or else we're gonna start facing fines. And I think it'll show good faith effort that we're, we already have showed that, but I think we need to, we need to take another step.
Who does the monitoring?
This will be done through Plan B.
You don't have any engineer like Tom that could do this?
Just like doing the dam or any of that. I need to be certified and all the right things.
Plan B is one of them.
I, I just can't, I, I don't believe, I can't even fathom that we would head down this road working out of the operation. We need to come up with a, a figure on what it's gonna cost and, and find a place where we're gonna get the money to do that. Because, because if we, if we have an attendant and it works out successfully, you know, that's gonna be another nine grand out of the budget that we've been running five, six, seven thousand dollars extra at the end of the year. Well, this year it was forty-five fifty. That's how close the budget was. That's what we carried forward was forty-five fifty. So, um, my, my thought is we need to get a handle on it. If we need to advertise it or whatever we need to do for procurement on this and start down that road and come up with a number and, and then find out where to get money. But there's no money in this operating in first. I mean, we got into this trouble a few years ago of saying to somebody, use up your budget, you know, and then we'll fill it in at the end. That's, that's not a good way to be.
Sort of, um- I don't hope it was a good way to be either, but it's just a way to get it-
I'm not saying it doesn't need to be done. I'm saying that we have to do it in a manner that makes sense with the rest of our budget.
How much, you said it cost a couple of thousand dollars to get that pumped out and taken away, right? The oil, the waste oil? How much was the, and, and that was, how often was that being done?
That was a long time ago.
A one-time thing.
That was a long time ago.
I mean, so if it costs a couple of thousand dollars a couple of times a year, that's four thousand dollars. That's less than we're talking about paying an attendant, another attendant, right?
But there's really, yeah, I'm hoping that we don't go back to that. I hope we don't have to get that pumped out that way again.
Right.
Doc, think of the-
Let, let us have the discussion.
Okay, but this is about it.
I mean, you know, do we have to, as long as doing it a couple of times a year is environmentally responsible, you know?
We shouldn't get to the point where we have to hire someone like Clean Havers or Save Up Environmental to come in and do this for us. We should be able to maintain it ourselves and have a local person use it in the waste oil.
Right. I understand. It sounds like it's cheaper to have Clean Havers come in and take care of it.
No, because you're only talking about the oil. We have the paint. We have the fluorescent bulbs, which I don't even know how much that's gonna cost yet. We just, this, we just had a company, had a company, this was just last Thursday. It only took a little bit to refuse to take the rest.
So I'm not understanding all the expenses you're talking about.
Let, let me jump in for a second.
Sure.
I went to Hazner's Waste Day up in Goshe two years ago. An air cleaner's up there involved with that. And he, he pulled me aside. He says, "Oh, Ron, you got some issues up there." I said, "What are you talking about at the dump?" I said, "Tell me what they are, like, write a letter, will you?" And, and I never got a letter from him. We never got a letter from him. But he implied that we were gonna be facing some stiff penalties, really big penalties if we didn't clean up our rack. And so you can't live with the problem. You can't, you can't promote the problem. You have to, they've been, I mean, according to him, and I, I never got the letter. We never got the letters. It's a mess up there.
Well, that D E P letter came out, what, a year ago? When did we get that original contact?
A few years.
You know, it's been, it's been a while. How many has that been building up?
Seems like it's fifteen months anyway.
You know, how long has that been, how long has that waste oil problem and the paint problem and, well, how long did it take to get to that point where it is now? We're talking a couple of months?
It's not how it's going. No, it's not how it's going. It's, you know, we cleaned it all up once. The original letter we got, we cleaned it, we cleaned most of it all up. We got it, we got everyone that's satisfied, but it just doesn't stay that way. We spent hours and hours down there. The highway department, last week, I have two guys down there probably for, we probably got eight hours apiece, two guys down there at the transfer station. I can't, it drives me crazy to have highway department guys down there just cleaning up stuff. And, and it just keeps going on and on. And maybe I shouldn't, maybe I didn't talk about that enough earlier. I'm sorry, but the time that we're spending just cleaning up and trying to keep up, and we're not even close to keeping up. You know, there's, there's so much to do. That's why I'm thinking a second attendant will help out, but-
I'm just, I'm just trying to make sure that's the most cost-effective way to, to do it, you know?
Oh, it's just like- As far as I can see, I mean, most towns our size have two attendants. To tell you the truth, we're only on the tip of the iceberg with this whole transfer station deal. The place is really, needs a lot of work. The attendants, sheds.
When the ship, the, the shack will be gone.
Yeah. The shack is terrible condition.
Forty mile an hour wind from the right direction, there she goes into-
The whole place is, needs a lot of work. I mean, I went and visited quite a few transfer stations a few years ago. Theirs is pretty fair.
Those are pretty fair.
Not too good. Most of them are paved. Most of them are much more neat and tidy. Nice buildings, sheds or whatever you have.
So would see the-
We might be facing some of that.
That's a capital problem.
We might be facing some of that if we don't tend to some of these other issues that they're asking us to do.
So the nineteen thousand dollar study, would that address some of that?
Yes. The remedial actions that they're asking about, there's eleven, eleven different suggestions that the D E P gives. Eleven possibilities. One of them, and number one is no action at all, so I don't know if we could get to that point, but it goes, like I said, all the way down- that point, but it goes, like I said, all the way down to even as far as a chain link fence around the whole area, removal of trees and establishing grass areas and less pervious surface. I don't know that we need to get that far yet, but I think we do need to take the first thing they're asking about, which is the, we have to absolutely get moving on the, um, monitoring of those wells, the monitoring of the, um, private wells that are within one thousand feet, the gas monitoring wells and sampling the brook. I really think that we should, even though they're hesitant to use operating expenses, I think we should get that done before winter sets up.
DEP must have given you what they expect out of this, you know, an outline of what they want taken care of.
Right. And what they want is to hire a firm like Time Bond to, to start these things we've been discussing.
Is there, is there a problem with taking that and, and advertising for proposals to get that work done?
I think we should move forward on that.
What's the amount, eleven thousand?
Eleven thousand for the first step.
But then if you combine it with the other one?
Total, if you combine, it'd be thirty thousand probably.
So if you put them together, thirty B would require you go out to bid, if you put them together, right? It's over the twenty-five thousand dollars.
Well, that threshold's at thirty-five thousand, but this is engineering services.
Oh, that's right, you're absolutely right.
The one thing I like, one of the things about Time Bond is they're the ones that originally were the consultants when all that stuff was installed.
Probably not the same engineers that are there now.
No, but they have all the data, they have the, where the things are. I don't even know exactly where all these monitoring wells are, myself, except all this happened before I was involved in the transfer station. There's some down, I know there's one that's down near Ray Ray's gravel bank. They know there, they have a map. They gave me a nice proposal, I'll give you a copy if you want to.
We'll need one.
Do you want a, a document to execute, a contract to execute?
Yeah. Yeah, we're ready to go, it's just not gonna happen, it's operating funds that's certain. So that, that's a good point, while this, with this fall out, we're ready to just, I'll just send that back to them, we can start.
Task one, private well survey report, engineering, coordination, site meeting and recording laboratory, fifty-one hundred dollars of that eleven thousand is laboratory fees. Gas monitoring equipment, three hundred bucks.
They say that the initial site assessment was done in two thousand and three.
This is something that Tom and his organization have worked. I'm making a motion to authorize them to execute the proposal for that engineering monitoring.
The task number one.
Task one, eleven thousand dollars of operating. There's something they've been after us to do for well over a year now, it's not gonna go away, we'll have to figure it out in April. Spread less sand, less salt.
I'll second that.
I hope it's spreading off.
Hope it don't spread out. Well, I, uh, yeah, I, I have no problem with moving forward on the project, but I think it is a bad precedent to set to use the operating funds to, for the day-to-day operation to, to move forward on this.
Do you have an alternate?
I don't have one today, and I probably wouldn't have one, to be honest with you, until after Thanksgiving, because I'm hoping by then that we have an idea of what we have for free cash. But, but opening, to me, opening the door and letting the horses out and then trying to figure out how to corral and back up is just not, well, I mean, I'm hoping we'll have a good, healthy free cash figure, but...
I understand your sentiment. The, it's not gonna make that dollar amount any less, regardless of which bucket we pull it from and how we move the shelves around. And I, and I understand that, you know, you don't wanna set a precedent, and hopefully, knowing that we have to deal with something a year and a half or so, you know, in advance, we'd have enough time to figure out how to budget for it, but this is what we're faced with right now, so...
We just got this proposal on October third.
Right.
Meanwhile, up until now, we hadn't had any numbers at all, we didn't have numbers to go by last year at budget time to have any idea.
No, we didn't.
No, but we knew it was an issue.
Yeah, we knew it was an issue. Tried to deal with it in various ways, but we really just need to get at least that first step done. And, you know, I talked with the accountant about it, we talked about that it is sort of an operational thing, because this is probably gonna be, it's something that we're supposed to be doing, it is kind of an operating expense to do this monitor. It is an operating expense. Probably gonna be something that we're gonna do more frequently moving forward.
Rob?
Yeah, I, I sense the urgency in this. Finding the bucket to make money out of concerns, but I sense the urgency in this. I, I think if we don't show some sign before, we could be facing some much stiffer penalties and shorter timelines by DEP, so I think it's better to show that we're moving in a direction and, and deal with the, the funding consequences of it.
And we did, we did carry money forward for this reason.
It was forty-five hundred and fifty dollars.
I got twelve thousand eight hundred.
I just looked it up, what we transferred forward was forty-five fifty. Maybe we didn't transfer it all forward. Unless the expense report is wrong.
Forty-five fifty? I don't, I don't have that.
Transfer station, let me find it again.
We used, there was two reasons we carried forward, one we've already used, um...
Transfer station expenses, we appropriated eighty thousand seven fifty-five and the transfer forward was forty-five fifty. That's what the accountant asked. For a total of eighty-five thousand, we've expended thirteen thousand, so we're twenty-six, thirty-two, so it leaves a balance, I'll call it seventy-two thousand dollars.
The forty-five fifty was a covered amount to cover some invoices that we didn't have yet.
Is it different, Tom?
Transfer station expenses and transfer station utilities. Well, if you really, you guys feel that it's a priority, what's the bigger priority, doing this or having the extra attendant? I'm not, I'm not trying to be a pain in the ass, I'm just trying to keep us between the mustard and the mayonnaise.
Can I make a suggestion on the attendant that might help?
Go ahead.
That if you're talking about hiring an extra attendant for six months, just talking not for the personnel board, but as a member of the personnel board, I would really think that it would be important for whoever is hired for that job, for them to not just be a watch person, but also an educator. And if they could educate, and if new signage can be made, and it's more appropriate and the place can be cleaned up, within that six months' time, perhaps people would be more well-educated, and maybe in the next six months, we won't need such a person. Or we might not need them as much.
I think that's what Tom was getting that for.
Tom, where do you see these the most critical expenses here? If you had to choose one over the other?
Trying to choose one over the other, we need to get, we need to get this, uh, this post-proposer environmental monitoring done.
So I would, I would argue that is a priority.
I don't think we're gonna find any problems, but if, if we came down to the point where we didn't act and later on there are problems found, that's gonna be a much bigger problem for us than doing this right now, I think.
So the motion is, is to execute task one for eleven thousand dollars. We've already been in motion about having an attendant, so, yeah, I put the question out there, it doesn't mean we have to go back and revisit it, but I, I wanted you to think about it, I wanted to add that there.
I'm fully engaged.
I'm, I'd like to think that there's not gonna be a problem. I'm hearing other things that make me think that there could easily be a problem. I haven't heard anything about what if there is a problem, we do the monitoring.
So these watering wells are monitoring the old landfill, the stuff that's under cap, whatever, there is a cap. So it's anything that might be leaching into the brook downstream, below the hill, anything leaching into drinking water wells that fortunately are, seem to be upstream of the, in the upper fur.
Right.
So...
Well, I, I understand that, I'm wondering if there is a problem and remediation is required, what does that mean, monitoring? And if, does that need to be considered if we embark on getting the answer to the...
That's all the headaches in the world.
I know, yeah.
Yeah, that's a, that's a bridge that'll have to be crossed, but that's the, yeah.
Um, two things. One, I, I do recall Tom, Tom, bringing that up through budgeting, and we had some conversations about money for just this kind of thing, I forget if he had an estimate, but we knew it was not gonna be a small amount. But secondly, I'm concerned that he's got some figures in mind of money that he thinks was carried forward, that sounds like what you're saying didn't happen. So is it possible that the money he was expecting to be carried forward didn't happen and is now gonna end up in free cash? And somehow there was a mistake that it didn't get moved forward, 'cause if it's twelve eight, he'd have his eleven to help figure this.
Four, five, minus forty-five.
Doesn't make any difference where it ends up in my mind, because if, if we got three hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of free cash, we can do all sorts of things. If it ends up for some crazy reason that it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, we won't be able to do any of that. We'll be turning lights off. Even the energy efficient ones.
Right, we, we don't, we have to do this monitoring to find out what we have to do. Hopefully we don't have to do anything like Todd said, hopefully everything will be fine, but we...
It, it sounds like we've been blanking there as much as twenty-five every year. Basically, it sounds like...
Pretty much.
So there's a motion and a second. Will be time to call for a vote?
I think so.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
It's fine, it's fine. This has to agree?
I still don't agree.
Hey. But Tommy did a vote on the...
What about the previous vote?
Yeah, there's a vote on the attendant that you already made.
There, there.
So now you have a vote.
We need a motion. You can't make a motion from out there tonight. I'm waiting to see if there's a motion.
I thought there was.
There wasn't a vote.
I know, but if you want to rescind that, you'd have to make a motion. So right now...
Did you pick that vote?
You voted on both.
Right.
So I'm just saying, I'm just saying that Tom just said either or, but you...
No, he was...
I was applying, I had a question.
I made a motion rescind the earlier one relative to the attendant.
Is that proper for? That's proper for? Is there any second? Seeing Tom? Alright.
You got your cake and eat it too.
That's right.
So let's clean the place up.
We'll clean the place up. Yep, it was a struggle, but as far as the transfer station, as long as you didn't come with something else about the transfer station, you got everything you wanted, so...
It's nothing I wanted. So I'd like to get rid of the whole place, off my plate.
Do we need to authorize you to second?
Well, we don't have the, it's not the contract.
It looks like a contract.
Well, it has task one and task two, we're only gonna do task one.
I can take care of that, I'll show them.
What's that? Oh, you can take care of it.
We want authorized representatives.
Okay.
But we're not, that, that's the entire, the entire package, that's not what we're signing up for.
We're gonna do task one for now.
Yeah.
We're gonna sort of take this one step at a time.
You're gonna clean up this mess there and get your attendant, right?
Right.
Do you have one in mind?
Yeah, I agree with that, I think we should put something in the patient as well.
We'll have to find the, find the very person. Get that, and make sure it's, we're not, we're doing it before the deadline. Alright, Tom, we've held you long enough.
Okay, that's right. Have a good one.
Alright, Diane. Thanks for your patience. Bring us up to date on what's going on with the police department.
Our train has gone a little local, I believe, like, um, toward the border. Right now, we're a little high on our reserve wages, we're at thirty-seven percent. How do we come winter, because in the summer, we do start the, um, pallets, you come in winter, you won't have this probably Sunday shipped, um, through the bringway that we're supposed to go.
So your projections, by the time we get to the third quarter, we should...
Yeah, right. Because we do a lot of the salaries and we, so, um, we've, we're down one officer. I'm hoping to fill that slot. It's been a struggle this week to try to get officers for Paul Festival. There are been all our officers and that moved down to like, three per board day, two that could do both days, not including me. I had to bring in some outside help, more than I wanted to, I wanted my officers to handle, but it's an issue, I'm gonna make up for it.
Okay.
Come, what comes with new officers, maybe you'll want to try to use as much uniforms that we already have, or may have to turn them back in, that we have for the new officers, but...
So does that mean you have to get their sizes before you hire them?
Only application.
I, I'll hire if it's you want. We want that position to go as soon as possible, we may be down a second officer after Paul Festival, that depends. Today, you're... To date, we're at a hundred and twenty-two incidents per year not heated motor vehicle accidents. Last year, we hit a hundred and twenty-two mark on ten eighteen. So it's still steady. Still going. Speech check has been out a lot this summer, almost February. They just put some renewals, brought in for a couple of days to charge and then it has died out.
Diane, that, that one twenty-two statistic, does that include things like traffic violations? Or is it?
No, that's just, not traffic violations, not motor vehicle accidents. It's just.
Calls.
Calls.
Okay.
Repair maintenance, we've had some repairs up the other day. We had to replace the windshield of the interceptor. It started cracking across the bottom, so that was a, a charge. The windshield, fluid board, um, of it, course during rain.
What else would you use?
What?
What else would you use?
That was under warranty. The interceptor does have some recalls going on, which we'll take care of. Possible upcoming repairs. I gotta have the interceptor with depth of brakes. It's making a noise.
Give me the audible signal.
Yes. Um, I'm with peers. I run into an issue in the Power video. It uses up an extreme amount of memory when I download another computer so that we can use that after the thumb drive. Right now, the thumb drive is full and I can't download it, take it off. I can't use just any thumb drive either. I have to make it from the company. I called the company on it. They have a fancy thing where you can have a monitor set up separately. The car comes in close to it, like docking at the station or something, the downrange always added with everything. As you can guess, it's an extremely high price. It is more for a meat food prover. But right now, basically, I need a computer dedicated to that.
Or at least a way to find enough memory.
The company suggested a separate one.
We'll contact the IT committee. And see if they can't come up with some.
External drive.
Something cheap.
Do you just need some place to store the data, right? Because you don't have to access it all the time.
No, I only have to access it when.
You need it, right?
I mean, you can, you can buy a road over thumb drives for a couple hundred dollars.
I can buy an external drive, gigabytes.
Well, you can't put, you have to be one of those. Color distribution. Like all monitors, you know, you have, who's anything. We're still under warranty, so.
My answer is that's the place to go to get the answer to that.
I, I think so. But if you're downloading it to your computer is what you're saying, right? You can download it to an external drive of your computer. Just have a separate external drive. It's short-lived, so I mean, yeah, and I would agree. Tech committee is the way to go on that. They should be able to direct you appropriately. That thumb drive is important to your interface, but that's it.
That's about all I've got right now.
Interceptor, how many miles do we have on that now?
Top to top on my end.
Roughly?
Sure, maybe about fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand. How about the Explorer?
Eighty-nine.
You had to put quite a bit of money under the Explorer here lately?
Um, did have an issue on something to do with the front end. I had all the maintenance records. I'm sorry, I can't remember if I made paras, if it's not my forte. If it makes a noise, I think. I do have all the records on it though. The front end locked up at a leak. This happened to it before. It got, we limped it down, lifted it down to my rectum.
Okay.
It was four hundred bucks.
So how do you feel about the budget at this point in time?
Nervous. Just because I think because I haven't done it before and I'm trying to, I guess, be more conservative and not.
It's okay to be nervous about it.
I just don't wanna come to you at the end of the year for it.
Well, we don't know what's gonna happen between now and then. It'd be great if we could project a surplus now and then if something happens.
If I can get officers to fit all the uniforms.
But your projections, are you good? I mean, does it look like it's all gonna work?
Yeah. The only one that was high that I can thought of was that we're at thirty-seven percent of the reserve wage. And like I said, that's gonna come down there. And not come down with, um, the road to death.
The interceptor. Two years old?
Yeah. No, it was the two thousand thirteen.
They came here in the beginning of the two thousand thirteen season, I believe.
Yeah.
September twelfth, right?
Yeah, I didn't tie it up around that time.
It was the September twelfth, September thirteen, fourteen. So we're three, three years in. You're not thinking that in this next fiscal year, they'll be replacing that in preschool?
No. No. I just wanna keep what we have, but not replace anything.
You said the Explorer is the old one and that's only got ninety thousand on it?
Yeah, and that one definitely one is for three year.
You need us to appoint?
Yes. Um, we have some issues with, um, we have given some officers for Fall Festival and I had to reach out to the town again. I got two other officers to help fill in. Don Haskins, she's from Corning Police Department. And Josh Schuler, he's from the Plankton Police Department.
And that's gonna give you an adequate number of people for Fall Festival?
Yeah. Jim Bernier, he can only work Sunday, so we'll go Friday and Sunday. And I still have to adapt them. Two officers that kind of ignored my.
So you need us to appoint those two officers?
Yes, please.
Saturday and Sunday?
Don Haskins.
Don Haskins.
And Josh Schuler.
And Josh Schuler. So I'll make appointment to appoint those two. And that's for a single event?
Yep, Saturday and Sunday Fall Festival.
Saturday and Sunday at Fall Festival. So we ask you of the Police Department to, to help set the motion to appoint. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You have a proposed position description for the, for your position? And this was one that, and Ron, you looked that over. Did you? I just gave that to you. You gave that to you two weeks ago?
Yep.
I mean, did you have any additions or?
I didn't. My only comment was that she thought I had a chance to look at it and comment on it.
Did you see anything glaring in there that?
Some thoughts up and then something that fits the law a little bit. On the operations overseeing, involving court proceedings, prepared for and attend all criminal and non-criminal years.
Which bullet point, okay.
Search from the bottom of page one.
Okay.
There's a lot of criminal years that don't have to have the officer or the chief there. So I'd like to change all to, to attend all required.
Did you say that again, please?
It says I'm to attend.
Right.
All criminal years and non-criminal years. Just something that, so just, I'd like only to attend all required criminal years.
Okay.
The other one, um, another one, this is one. It is on fifth, uh, second page, other administrative.
Second page?
Yep. The license to carry fire identification cards. Sign off on appropriate permits through the legal and property procedures. Issue license to carry firearms, identification cards and turnover money to federal as per procedure.
Do you have Betty doing that now?
I don't know.
Does this just mean that it's, it's your designated to do it? Or does it mean you have to do it?
Well, that's what I've had under. The way it reads to me is that I'm to issue the license to carry firearms, identification.
Right. Well, your signature, it's your signature on the cards, right? It's not. Oh, okay.
Not the way it's handled right now.
Okay.
And the way it's handled is the way it has been handled. And it works well.
Someone.
It works well.
But Chief Droni, um, we should sign off on that first.
So you've authorized Betty to do that?
Um, that was done before.
So in terms of that's just a decision you could make. I mean, what, what would be your change to what you're on that?
Um, minimum would be to sign off, well, Chief signs off on all. Like it says here, sign off on all, over time. Who we go to on the procedures. I, I would like to at least have it across my desk so I can see what she's doing, who's giving what and have an idea of what's going on. I, I feel like I don't know what's going on.
It sounds like you're in charge of that.
Yeah. Well, I didn't know if I could change, because it was done before me. I wasn't sure I could change who signs off.
I can, you have a police chief.
Perfect.
That should be, I mean, it's, it's fine the way that operates. You know, that she's handling it, that's great, but yeah, it shouldn't be your signature. Absolutely.
It is gonna give you more.
Hmm, absolutely.
Knowledge.
Yeah, that's right. That's right, it's in wheelhouse.
Yeah, it is.
So you'll make that change in terms of.
Something. So with that, that bullet point is.
It's okay.
Um, no, because the second half of that bullet point, it says, issue license to carry firearms, identification, needs designated in there somewhere.
I don't think so.
No?
No, I think, I think your signature indicates that you're issuing the license. You're issuing the license. Yeah. Yeah, you, you own that one. Yep.
So with that, you just, we just talked about that, right? Is that you want it to be signed off?
It's, to me, signing off on is one thing, issuing is another thing. But I have researched that time.
What, what distinction do you have between that?
When I think of issuing, it's the actual doing it, both taking the fingerprints and doing all that.
That's, that's none of it.
That's all the work, that's all the work ahead of issuing it.
Yep.
That's another reason why I want to give it to him.
Right.
So he does qualifications.
Yep. And, and all the language in the law says Chief of Police, Chief of Police.
Yeah.
But I mean, all these towns have an officer going. It's not the Chief of Police sitting there right now. You know, it's, all the towns have designated person, just like you do. Well.
Chief thinks that it is a Sunday night. Jared Bellows does it, I think, Wednesday nights. I can.
Okay, all right. I'm not saying, there's too general, too broad of a generalization, I guess. But, you know, you go to places like Boston and Worcester, it's not the Chief of Police.
Yeah, Boston and Worcester.
Well, I'm just saying. Ash goes right behind that.
You have the Chief of Police?
Yep, I am. The last page. Um, under other, the second bullet, the chief must complete a probationary hearing set forth by its left board. Is the set forth part. It's the only one to me.
Didn't you do it when we?
Yeah, I did.
Pretty much agree that that six month stint was.
Is that what, should six months be in here somewhere or should it?
No.
I think you can take a letter of offer.
Because I think, I think that'll have to do with the next police chief. Sounds like you're on two, a pretty fine two columns. So you really don't have any issues that's set on page one that we put attend all. Required as needed.
As needed, yeah.
Something like that. Yeah.
Well, what's it gonna be? Let's make a decision.
What we're seeing is all the court proceeds, prepare for attendance, attend criminal and non-criminal hearings.
As required.
Have it as a need attend as required. Just tack it on the end. Take out all, tack on as required on the end. Yes.
Don't you feel cozier now that you've stepped closer to having a job description?
So if I can.
I do.
What happens now? Is this position description? It's been, it's come before us and courtesy to the police chief. We do the final edit of it, send a word copy to the Personnel?
That's exactly the procedure and get their feedback on it. And then it becomes part of that and we just act.
I have one other thing.
What was that?
It's under my job description as to record the new violation citations and put them in the database. Each officer does that under, I review them, but that's their responsibility.
Yeah, I think.
There's nothing in here that says you don't have designated. You have officers that you assign tasks to. It's about ultimately.
It's your, it's your oversight. Yeah.
Right?
When, when it says record, you have to accept it. Except for it doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to record it. It's a, you know, the buck stops, we usually, is what it means.
No problem.
You got that, Mary?
Mm-hmm.
Let's draw straws around them.
So, and how about a motion to, to.
Accept this as amended?
Accept it or.
With edits?
Yeah, accept this draft.
Sure. As edited.
As edited. Second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thanks, Diane. Got all that done? Jim Cutler, you're next. Thanks for your patience. It's always fun to talk about the dump.
Yeah, isn't it?
Get tied up in that. See, Tommy got right out of here. Okay. Let's talk about Energy Manager.
Okay. What should be fairly straightforward? Uh, I had a, what you're looking for was a response from the Ethics Commission on my position as Energy Manager. Easy to be my other position as a member of the Green Committee's commission. And their response was there was absolutely no conflict at all. But that when a person like myself who is doing one thing and then does another thing, a form is filed and that form is twenty B. And I have that here. I filled out my section of it. And then there's two other sections that need to be filled out by you guys. And then it just has to be filed with the town. So let's sort of that.
Does that sound clear as muds? Sounds good. Sounds fantastic with that. Are you satisfied?
So this is a disclosure by. So this is a disclosure by municipal employer of financial interest in municipal contract.
Get that done, we don't have to stop everything, we do it right now. Um, and that needs to be filed with the town clerk.
There's no, no, stay filed with the required.
So, uh, that's really what we were waiting for as far as appointing you to be energy manager. That's my understanding. Has the rest of the committee backed away from Jim since that?
Not that I know of.
Not that you know of, all right. Is there a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion that we appoint Jim Cutler as the, uh, energy manager of the town of Ashville. I'll say that, is that worded correctly?
Yeah.
Okay. But I have a discussion with Green Communities.
Green Communities?
Seconded? Seconded? Any other discussion?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Should we sign this before? Or is that not?
Uh, let me, let me address that again. Um, the date of my hire is part of that form, so it sounds to me, my interpretation based on the instructions, is that I have to be hired before you can sign it.
Ah, thank you. Good, good catch.
No.
You sealed.
On both of your parts. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Unanimous?
Good deal.
Thanks for doing that. Now you can sit here and really answer the big questions on the Mass Solar Electric Municipal Agreement.
Hopefully that will be just as straightforward. Um, so here's, uh, the, the primary reason why we're addressing this now is the inter municipality agreement. That's the, that's the one document that, um, we need the select board to, um, uh, accept. And this document has been created, um, previously, and we are using, uh, we are reusing it as, as it was used by the towns of Whaley, Chesterfield, and Williamsburg. So, uh, the towns of, our partner towns of Buckland and Plainfield have accepted it. They, my understanding is that they use the same legal office, um, but that we use a different one. So it requires you all to look at that and make sure that you're on board with.
Well, we, we have in the past used that legal office.
You have, okay. So, the other, uh, question that came up was, um, the overall proposal of which the municipality agreement is a part of. And that proposal, um, has a deadline of October fifteenth. At that point, we need to submit it. It is an ongoing process of, of pulling in various, um, components of that proposal. Volunteers, court members, um, you know, descriptions of the towns, permitting processes, et cetera. When those are all put together, then we're going to, uh, request a letter of commitment from the select board. Each town, each of the three towns has to submit that letter of commitment. And I have Brian here who's gonna help make sure I don't miss something here. Um, and then there's also letters of commitment that were, uh, that come from the Green Communities Committees from each town. Um, at that point, those, your signatures, I believe it's only you as a slide as chair of the select board, uh, go on those documents, they get compiled into the overall proposal, that gets submitted to Mass CEC. So tonight, all we're really looking for is just the approval of the municipality agreement.
The intermunicipality.
The intersmunicipality, exactly.
Now, we have a question on, it referred to about legal fees.
Yes.
Are there any legal fees that were gonna be?
They're not, yeah, um, when, uh, the towns of Whaley, Williamsburg, and Chesterfield put together, there were legal fees because they created the document themselves. So there was legal fees associated with the creation of the intermunicipality agreement. Now that it is pre-existing, we don't have those fees. However, there may be fees that come up that are unforeseen. So there needs to be a placeholder in the agreement that addresses that should it come up for any reason. So it's, it is something to, um, to be aware of and, um, but that we have, there is nothing heretofore on, uh, you know, in this issue in terms of cost numbers. Uh, because as I said, the document is pre-existing. Does that help?
That helps a lot, that helps a lot. Tom, any other questions?
No, that, that, again, satisfactory, my questions.
Yeah, there was, there was another question, just wanna make sure that we're not missing anything about, um, events surrounding cancellation of the agreement. And so each town, there's a $2,500, um, grant monies that each town has to use. And so, um, there's, uh, just a clause in there to make sure that if there, if there's a cancellation or termination of that contract, and there are any outstanding, um, bills, invoices, what have you, there is a clause that addresses that. And that, that was the other question that came up, which we have, I believe, answered, um, hopefully satisfactory. But I just wanted to mention it to make sure that there wasn't any question.
So, the $2,500, if, if there were expenditure beyond what the grant was.
Right, then it would be shared.
They would be shared, I suppose.
As I understand it, the $2,500 is split three ways.
Uh, no, it looks, uh, I believe, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, it's $2,500 allocated per town.
I think so, yeah.
Because he had said that the marketing grant is $2,500, but he, in the first email that you sent.
Yes, I, I think it may have been incorrect.
Okay, I'm fine.
So, $500 is for the coach.
There is a $500 stipend for the coach. The coach has the, um, choice to waive that or not. Um, Asheville has waived, Buckland has waived, Plainfield has not, as far as, uh, the submitted budgets go. That's what we see so far.
So, so that $2,000 will be used for education and promotion and?
Correct, it gets rolled into the general budget for.
The building. Any dag, Brian?
Um, just the, the, we will need the commitment letter signed prior to your next meeting.
Maybe you do your signing, it could be for the motion.
Yeah, hold for the motion. And then, Mary, should that, a copy of that letter, is that letter, uh, does that have to be crafted? Or is that pre-existing?
We saw the examples.
Yeah.
We have examples, but I think it needs to be.
Needs some editing to put it on.
Right.
Put the right text on Asheville, letterhead, I assume.
Does it need to be as lengthy as the ones up for, you said, examples? I mean, they were.
They were verbose. I, um, I think that, uh, taking what the examples we had and, and just simply doing, you know, what really is only needed to make it Asheville would be sufficient.
So has that motion been?
Hasn't been made yet.
Okay. And you want to?
I, I don't know.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the chair to execute on behalf of the select board, the solar, I'm sorry, the inter, what's it called?
Intermunicipal agreement.
The intermunicipal agreement and all.
That has one for all three of us.
You have that later, right?
Well, I think that's only.
I think this one. This one here.
Right. I just see your name in here.
Well, it's the commitment letter that, the commitment letter was offered, yeah, right here.
So that the, so, so.
I'll start over.
We really don't need a motion for this if we all sign.
Well, let's make a motion.
Okay. I'll make a motion that the select board sign off on the intermunicipal agreement. And that we authorize the chair to sign all necessary letters of commitment associated with the process. Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Put this puppy to bed.
So I just wanna, just make sure we're clear that, um, you have, uh, examples of the commitment letter. Feel you need additional, um, materials to make that happen.
I think we need a letter.
You need a letter?
For me to sign?
Uh, right.
Like the one that Plainfield did.
Right, okay, so, so that's the answer to my question, is that we're gonna craft that for you and submit it. Very good.
I do have one comment, too. I was at a legislative breakfast recently. They suggested that our green committee or you craft letters for the select board to sign to all potential governors to talk about raising the ceiling for, um, solar racks. Apparently, it could be an issue from a banking point of view for people, I mean, this is a great program, but still it has to be funded, right?
Right, so you're saying that this program, that we're, we're pumped up against the ceiling?
Yeah, we're pumped up against it, and none of the governors.
We did get, uh, Senate Bill 22, whatever it was, did not do what it needed, did what we needed to do.
And we need the governor's support. They said that right now, it's kind of been this hard question where it's with all the governors. And we should be very vocal about it because this program will fail if you don't get those, that ceiling bumped up and that metering continues.
You got us on offense, don't you?
Yeah, well, we can always put in a pipeline. You can just soak it and just suck some gas out of the ground.
All right, and that was a, if you don't mind repeating what you.
A legislative breakfast for select board members, basically, some conway.
To, uh, to craft a letter, uh, to the governors?
To the, to the gubernatorial candidates.
Yeah.
To show your support of raising the ceiling for solar racks.
If you don't have Charlie Baker's address, I can help you out. All right, anything, anything else, Jim? Brian, do you have any?
Yeah, on the, on the energy manager position, uh, we crafted a job description, or at least a first draft of that. And I, boy, I sent it to Mary anyway.
We've got it in the file?
Okay.
Let's take a minute to look at it, shall we? Do you have a chance to look at it, Tom?
If I can find it, I'll let you know.
Looks like that.
I have. I think I haven't ever seen it yet.
Ronald died, he keeps tracking stuff the way I do. Causal exposure to combustion products. Have you seen this? Oh, I have this. So, thinking ahead as a position description, would we always need to be tied to having an Asheville resident?
I think that's not, uh, the, the grant didn't stipulate that.
I mean, we're very fortunate to have an Asheville resident, but I was just wondering, I mean, maybe not an issue to these other two gentlemen. I was just trying to get things down and why, you know?
But we could always change it.
Right, this is gonna go, what, through us in the basement?
It's, it's, it's right along.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't recall where that came from, that piece of it, I don't.
I mean, uh, the, you know, when you look at the grant, it's, it's, um, it would be a tough nut to try to find within the confines of the town.
Right.
That'd be, that'd be fair to strike it before we send it on. Do you see, do you see anything else that needs to be edited on there? How, how many hours are we expecting this to be in a year or?
So one day a week, eight hours a week.
How many?
Eight hours a week.
I mean, it says part-time, but it never really mentioned how many hours.
I think we should do that first, I think.
Cause the next grant may be for three days.
Work for full time.
Then I'd have a problem.
Yeah. We, I think we were also thinking that we weren't gonna hold him to working one day of work, week, it could work whatever day is made sense in a month or whatever.
So would we like to accept this draft and do the same as we did with the police and send it to the personnel?
I think so.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we accept this draft from the Green Communities Committee. Entitled, as edited, uh, entitled Energy Manager for the Town of Ashville, Massachusetts. Also, any other discussion? Saying none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Good. You got that one edited, you ladies work.
Yep, it's, uh, as you struck Asheville residents.
Correct.
And you'd like to go to the personnel for this to change this?
Yeah. Get the speaker there.
Tom.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Um, I'm tying some things together that probably don't seem logical, however, energy manager takes me back to the transfer station. Because you're talking about resources that you're recycling. Is that something you all have entertained in terms of green communities? Or is it strictly about things within the town to, to be more positive about?
Our primary focus, I think initially, is green communities, stuff is to help us finish spending the green communities grant.
Which didn't have anything to do with recycling at the transfer station.
And this is a title that they designated, right, energy manager?
Yeah.
Well, this is the energy manager grant.
That's right.
Which is separate from the green communities grant.
I understand.
Eventually, the new transfer station will be operating on its own waste oil to heat the building. Well, that's, that's a little bit further down the road.
Plus the solar.
And the solar, plus the geothermal from methane, you know, methane gas. We, we got a big plan, but.
You tie your idea to this, I think.
Yeah, yeah. That's future.
Straight to have, I bet you were a star track.
No, I didn't.
Right?
No, you were.
You were right with.
These are two of them.
It's such a wonderful thing to have a good imagination, you and Jim, right? All right. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
So I, I'll be seeing, uh, I got to be sworn in or something, so I can do something about that.
Can you have a question? Can you, can you, can you tell? Can you please tell it?
Our sewer plant doesn't generate enough for methane digestion, though, unfortunately.
Probably need a couple of big building developments to help.
Senior house.
Senior house. Chris Gray, you're next. Next victim. How are you, sir?
I'm okay.
How are you?
I'm great.
So where are we in our, your proposal to set up a camp?
Revised contract was sent to the board last week. And that was a Word document with track changes showing town council's track changes from February. And this is the next time, this is the next step. So including now my edits.
Are these, I'm looking at two, say, C. Gray's edits, are these both the same?
You should have one that says C. Gray's and one that says town council.
I have three, so one of them must be the top.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
All right. And yours is the most recent?
Correct.
Let's take that paragraph one. What's crossed out at the bottom of paragraph one. It seems like it makes sense to me.
It ties into the second, number two. Where number two already had approval of the building committee and of the historical commission.
Yep.
So that has effectively been moved down to number two.
Number two.
And changed. Since it's going to be such a dynamic project, final installation plans are not something that I expect to ever achieve because it'll be in various stages and an ongoing work. So, simply approval from the building committee for, I have here for all equipment installations and the store commission for equipment installation visible through the broad, since it's my understanding that was meant their charges.
Well, you've got the-
I have, but I will need to meet with them again when I-
Sure.
Need to change.
Any questions so far? Now's the time. I guess I was a little concerned where you've got in number two, Hilltown Networks will not be held liable for damages resulting, you've got that crossed out.
That was town council's removal. So what, the way it was written previously said the town hall building committee would inspect the equipment installations and then that inspection would relieve Hilltown Networks of damages that might occur as a result of that installation because they would be overseen. But since it's, town council suggested that that should be removed entirely and therefore since an inspection is not worth anything, I changed it to approval of the town hall building committee required for the equipment installations rather than inspection.
But Chris, you chose not to, or you chose to delete that portion where she said, "Hilltown Networks shall present final installation plans to the town building committee and historical commission for approval. Any approval of these plans shall not relieve Hilltown Networks of its responsibilities and liabilities that appear under." What's, what's, am I missing the issue? What's the issues?
Why did you remove that? The second paragraph says the same thing.
Yeah. Effectively you did-
Last sentence of the second paragraph adds it back in.
But why didn't the town council see it fit to put it there?
When we send it back to her for one last time, we'll have a pretty good idea.
Is my impression that she wanted final installation plans, that was the one thing different between the first paragraph and the second paragraph.
What you're saying is it's still dynamic and it-
There won't be a final installation plan necessarily. And my preference is to work within an envelope rather than work to an exacting specification.
Okay. Let's move on to three if there's no questions on two. How many years do we wanna go? Three, two, one. One year will work as long as that would keep the select board involved, I suppose, as long as it had a clause in it that it could just be renewed. We don't need to have a special town meeting every time once we get going.
Right.
Will you, how do you think your break-even's gonna be? Year what?
I don't know. I hesitate to answer the question. I hesitate to answer the question because I feel like that's-
I'm not using that as a negotiation trick or anything on, like, trying to figure out how many years to allow for or whatever. I'm just curious. If I don't want to shorten, is what I'm saying.
How?
Is this your change here, three years for the initial term?
Yes.
Was that your, was that your desired amount?
Yeah, so I had three. She changed it to two inside of MGLG V.
Yep.
Which doesn't require two, it allows up to three.
Okay.
And I changed it back to three because the proposal states three.
Okay.
Because my, my contracts with my internet service provider is going to be for three-year increments.
Okay.
So it'd be nice if they-
In that charge.
Yep. Since, to answer your question, since it's a very scalable system-
Yep.
Break-even will be very soon, but that doesn't mean make a lot of money very soon.
No, I'm planning on retiring on this, aren't I?
Each increment will be, defines break-even point in a rather short period of time.
Okay.
But that's just a characteristic of the power wireless systems.
Right.
Can deploy.
The wild card, the town can sign up.
Yeah.
The town can sign up and house soon.
Yeah. And only a limited amount can actually sign up now because the ponies are coming back.
Wrong.
I'm in favor of two, two-year periods. You know, everyone can be on the best behavior going forward. We can make modifications to this agreement if the parties, there's a modification section in here. I'd rather keep it more present on this table than to, three years seems like a long time. Seems like you could almost forget about it. And I think it's important to do it. I think, provided that everything goes swimmingly well, who's gonna argue with anything? I'm in favor, I'm not in favor of one year. I think that's just too much work for this board to be dealing with all the time. But I think two years is reasonable, really good.
Are there other provisions for terminating the agreement before the term is up? I can't remember.
Uh, yeah, all in favor of the town, pretty much. There's a standard breach of-
There's nine, but is there anything else?
If I recall correctly, there are.
We need a section in here on, it seems to me we would want a section in here about making it evergreen. I don't see that in here. Or at least that both parties can just agree to continue now.
Yeah, there should be modifications. Something like that. I thought I read that in one of the versions, but I guess not.
Well, there's two, two-year extensions, right? In the current one, that she, she said there may be two, two-year extensions of this agreement provided that the parties reach agreement on the terms of the extensions in the time the SAVs write the provision of services to date of the extension.
Yeah, right, that was under the term. I'm talking about just termination.
Oh, revision, just termination.
And Chris, your notes are, you were thinking there'd be four, three-year extensions.
My proposal said an option to extend a three-year increase. And I just had four in my previous lawsuit document.
I'm just thinking that, like, even the best-case scenario, I don't see fiber to the door coming within three years. You know, I don't see it happening. It'd be wonderful if it did, but I don't know if it's in danger of a three-year term to start with. I don't think there's gonna be a better alternative in that.
So then you're in favor of maybe four, three-year extensions?
And we don't have to do any. I'm okay with an initial three-year term.
Period.
Oh, well, they can leave the extensions in there, but we don't have to grant an extension, right? The way this is written.
I think I'm in favor of three years with a maximum of three extensions. I think that would work for me.
I think, I think the extensions are kind of, you know-
Once we've got started, have to get started down this road.
The way it's written, it seems, it doesn't even need to be there since we need to reach an agreement on the terms of the extensions anyway. So you have to look at the contract again anyway, so it seems like the same process to have extensions versus just show up with the same contract in it.
I mean, I've always looked at this as the bridge between DSL and fiber, right, to the door, either or town.
Some place is dialogue.
Well, yeah, yeah, you might have some. But when we get to fiber, I would expect that we would jump to it, but I don't think we'd get there very quickly based on how things have been going for the last ten years.
Based on my understanding of leverage setup, I would even, if I was in their location, I would still be cost competitive with their service.
Cost competitive, yeah, but speed-wise and service-wise.
It depends on how they're managing the network because they claim a gigabit service, but that's a gigabit total shared among 800 homes. So their oversell rate is particularly high, which could allow for hibernating.
Yep.
I don't, I don't know how they're going to manage their network, but people who don't need the faster speed, you know, that is out of the switch. So I would want to be able to continue to provide those people service if they so choose.
Right, and one of the things that we've discussed before was making sure that we have the leverage of the entire town behind us if we wanted to push through some project like I did. That's one of the things that we discussed. And it's a concern for us. We don't want a third of the town to not be behind a project like that if they already have pretty darn good service from you, so.
I'd like to think that the town would come together and do what's good for the-
Yeah.
For the whole town.
We'd all want to think that.
But also, all of my repeaters and extensions are going to end up being on private property.
Right.
So even if the contract ends here, it would just deprive the center of town from my service ultimately, if I'm able to expand and things through.
Right. I mean, I just wanna be as upfront and as clear, but what my, my open intention would be, if we got to that point, I don't want you to be holding back five years from now, you know, not having heard this before.
Yep.
Okay?
Thank you.
Anything else, Ryan? Should there be something in here about, not to be the grim reaper or anything, but that there be some, if you decided to close up shop, that there would be some written notification so we wouldn't come in on Monday morning and not have any internet service and the-
I'd like to think any human being would do-
Maybe you're assigned, you know, and maybe, you know, you could be kind of, right? It doesn't say anything about written, you know, written elders or-
Well, I don't know that I'd get that from any of the service provider right now. I got satellite service now. There's someone, if someone's fine, Frank, you would know if it wasn't there. I don't start reading it, but it's not like they're gonna tell me to close their door.
I guess to that point, to that exact point, I do have an issue. And I typed up this little memo that I distributed to you guys. And I personally think that we should be doing things just a little bit differently. And some of my thoughts or enlightenment came from the special town meeting. And I'm in favor of the general proposal, but I think it should be more accountable. I don't think we should be getting fee, services in lieu of, in lieu of payment. I think that we should charge you a fair one and you should charge us fair service providing costs.
Okay.
And the reason I think that is because of the procurement laws in Massachusetts. And I think it's important that we engage in that together. I don't think it necessarily need be a lengthy process. But I think your service agreement to the town to provide internet services should be a separate little contract with us, with termination clause in there, with a scope in there, what are you gonna do exactly? And what Tom alluded to about blocking out the door or something, there should be some clause in there about how to terminate that service agreement. Personally, I see that as an important thing. We should charge you a fair rent.
Okay.
And I think, I've explored this option with you guys, this memo, and I think it needs to be considered whether or not it's a valid consideration is another point. But we would be granting you exclusive use upstairs.
Yes.
So you have to ask yourself-
Of the unlicensed bank. Of the unlicensed bands?
Right. So basically, competition could come in there and do the exact same thing you're doing.
On the unlicensed bands?
Right.
There are also licensed bands that would use.
Right. But on those unlicensed bands?
Yep.
So the question is, what is a fair rent to charge? And I suggest in a memo to the board that we should look at your business plan, not to approve your business plan. I don't want to be involved with your business plan at all. But oftentimes, rent is a function of revenue. And I think somehow we need to provide a fair rent. And that's just my personal thoughts, because otherwise... Originally, before the town meeting, I was saying, what's rent? It's gonna be under $10,000, perhaps, way under $10,000. So section, the procurement law 30B from Massachusetts says anything under that, you just have to do good business practices to secure that. But what if fair rent? Just, I have no basis for understanding what fair rent. What if fair rent should be $20,000 because you have exclusive use of this unlicensed band? Then I didn't do due diligence. You understand what I'm saying? And we're not protecting the town's interests. So I think we need to... You asked me what I thought about that one thing, and that kind of was the tip of the iceberg. I think we need to do a little bit more due diligence on it. And the same is true for the services provided. Hate to say it, but should we be going out to bid for the internet service provider? If it's over the $10,000 mark, we just have to practice good business practices. If it's over the $25,000 mark, we have to go out to bid. So we need to know what that number is so that we can say we acted appropriately, in my mind. I could be way off base, but that's...
Yeah, just in the town, you're talking about the internet...
Services provided.
Provision of internet service that Hilltown...
Is provided in the town.
Is already providing for town, which came out of the tech committee, I believe.
Well, it's tied to this contract, right? Because under this contract, it specifically says that no direct cash shall be paid for the use of the site. So I have... I take exception to that clause, because I think they should be very separate. You understand? It says that the service will be provided, and no direct cash will be paid for use of the site.
Yeah. And that service is the service the town is currently paying for, at $100 a month.
We can clean up. If that's a fair service, and I think we need a separate contract for that fair service, it should be bundled with this contract to rent this place upstairs.
Okay.
You understand what I'm saying? They're two separate...
I understand what you are saying, but this is standard in the wireless industry to exchange internet service, which is why I suggested doing this. I'm happy to do it the other way and do it separately, provide the internet services I am currently, and then pay for use of the town hall. It's just money changing hands.
Well, the reason I think it's important is because I've been approached by people on the street that say, it's in the town's interest. I mean, you're in bed with Hilltown Networks. Not at all. But they see it bundled this way, as we are getting something, services in lieu of payment, for this, and they see the town maybe pushing this in a favorable sort of way. And this should be done as an iron's lung transaction. It's my only recommendation relative to that section.
If you guys on the special town meeting told us that the town wants to move forward on this...
Then why else could I go shoot the contract?
Yeah, I think Ron's not suggesting we don't move forward on it, approaching all that, but I think if I understand what you're saying, it's just in terms of accounting practices, separating out the, you know, we're gonna invoice you for your rental, and you're gonna charge us for the services.
And there's contracts and rental agreements on both.
It's not a rent, it's a service.
What's that?
It's a service.
The internet?
Yeah.
Yeah. You said it right, and you have, you're picking up a certain amount of this.
Okay. Then I'll suggest a couple, just a couple of thoughts I have.
Well, let's just follow this spot for a second. So you're talking about approaching it different. But I'm trying to figure out what the distinction is. Except...
It's a perception, a matter of perception.
It's gonna be just another line item on the budget when we get...
Town office expense or whatever, but it's a perception, it's an issue.
It's just gonna be another number to grind.
Right.
But if someone was to come in and say, why didn't you go through procurement, what are you gonna say? That you didn't charge him any rent up there, and you're doing some exchange of services? And they're saying, yeah, but what's the value of that rental space up there? You just gave him exclusive use of those unlicensed bands in that space upstairs. What's the rental pay? I don't have any idea on that rental pay.
Well, we're agreeing that it's adequate to our internet service that we've been paying. And what if we pay a $140,000, a $140,000, what would we pay in prior...
As a small business owner, a small business owner, you know, what we pay for rent is between me and the landlord, and he's not looking at my business plan, and we negotiate and come to a free house.
Because as I stated in my memo, your rent is controlled by the market and free enterprise. Totally what people would pay, what you're willing to pay.
People aren't knocking down the door to use the steeple. Isn't that market? I mean, people aren't knocking down, but like...
Services, but we haven't gone out to bid either, right? We haven't gone out to bid, and we're saying in item six, he has exclusive use of those unlicensed bands. This isn't a painful exercise to go through, the way I suggested in my memo. You just perhaps get the finance committee involved with this. Look at the business plan. I'm not into approving this business plan.
That could be painful.
I'm just saying, is it a fair rent? And is his service fair either? Whatever the services might need to be renegotiated. I don't argue that it might not be the same number, you know? But I think to protect the town in our decision, we need to go through that exercise. But I'm only one voice here, so...
No, I see a difference, I see a difference with no distinction that I can visualize. I can see us trying to come up with a couple of different ways to attack it and have another contract besides this contract, and easily spending another $600 or $800 on legal fees to get it all ironed out and taking a bunch of time.
And even worse, another six months.
I think it's a quick process. I think we could focus on this and get it done. I mean, what I said in the memo is the tech committee did their job. They endorsed this to bring, you know, all the good things that wireless broadband would bring to the town. They did an excellent job. It's here for us to execute, negotiate the contract. Now it's up to us as the chief financial executives to make this business transaction happen correctly. And I'm just trying to avoid problems later. And I'm not being overly conservative, I'm just saying...
No, I don't think you're being overly conservative. I just wonder how long the exercises are gonna take.
I think it could be quicker. Well, you're being a whole lot more conservative than you were an hour ago when we decided to spend money that, out of operating for the building that we didn't have. Well, don't get out of for the contract.
When he's telling you to spend money, that's not being conservative at all.
That was being, that was being the opposite of conservative. Guys, where are you? I'm ready to move forward and get this going. I think that was a pretty good signal that I heard at the special town meeting, that we move forward on this.
And if fair rent turns out to be higher, then in three years, we get an opportunity to correct for that. In the meantime, they can lure us out if they want. They've asked us to make a decision.
Just trying to...
You've only been here a little while, you shouldn't be volunteering.
Trying to get out. No, I'm just saying, I understand where you're coming from, Ron, I appreciate it. I really do. But I think we're safe here.
Okay. Two other points I had in the memo. One was, we know the steeple has structural and superficial issues. We know that.
So can you expand on that a little bit?
Yeah, three columns are in the process of decaying. I'm not gonna say they're rotten. I'm gonna say they're in a process of decaying. And there will be a time at which we'll have to replace it. They're huge columns. They go through, you know, I think they're something like 30 or 40 feet long. 36 feet. So now we have interrupted service here. I don't want to be responsible for any business loss whatsoever. I've also heard, and I'm not gonna name names, that this steeple could possibly blow off. I don't want to be responsible for loss of business on that either. The building is the building the way it is, we'll work with it the way it is. But I don't want to be responsible for business loss. And there's a lot of business loss if there's an issue up there. So I think there should be a clause in this contract that addresses those.
If there's a hurricane that comes through, and she goes for a ride...
Yeah, I think that's an excellent point.
I think that's a great point.
The other thing I think we should have in here is a restoration bond over time. I don't think the 20 has to come up with right away, but over the three years, I think money should be set aside, and I put a number in there, $5,000, that satisfies everybody that will be restored to pre-existing conditions.
When you're using the term restored as in like commissioning one every time?
Yeah, when it's no longer sufficient, or we decide not to renew the contract. And I'm not looking to drain his cash resources upfront. I'm just saying, over time, a bond should be established. Once satisfied, the $5,000 goes back to him. And the walls are putted, and all this stuff is done, that needs to be done. It seems like a reasonable thing to do. I mean, you have that in rent.
So you're saying that, you're obviously not saying that would be in lieu of the general liability insurance of $1 million.
He's gotta carry his own insurance. There's a thing called business loss, and he should carry business loss insurance in the event that something happens that's really anticipated. I mean, if that's...
Hilltown Networks agrees to obtain a general liability insurance policy with a face value of at least $1 million to insure them for any loss as a result of the use of the premises and to cover the indemnification provisions herein. Hilltown Networks agrees to provide town with such as said insurance.
That's not the same as what you're saying, because what Ron is saying is, if there are other businesses using this network, and they experience a loss in business because the network goes down, could the town be liable for that? We don't want to be liable for that. That's the clause that we're stopping.
Well, that's not the $5,000, is it?
No, no, that's a totally different...
This is something completely different.
It's something that says that we will be held harmless from all business associated. He will indemnify and defend this for all losses.
Hilltown Networks shall indemnify, hold harmless, and defend town and its employees and agents from and against all claims, damages, losses, and expenses, including attorney's fees resulting from any negligent act, misconduct, or omission on the part of Hilltown Networks, its employees, agents, assigns, or contracted.
Negligent acts, errors, and omissions. If the wind knocks the steeple off, that's not a negligent act on their part. That's a compartmentalized, or act of... Force, whatever, so... Just be expanded a little bit.
All right.
Just a quick question. At the special town meeting, an issue of the grounding came up. And is that good? I mean, as senior colleague said, he needs to be able to ground his equipment, but the building's grounded, and so there's kind of money involved before he can connect.
You're gonna have to wait for a report from the building committee, which is how I left special town meeting.
More money is what I was concerned about.
Well, the...
He doesn't need lightning protection, but I was kind of amazed that the town hall didn't have any type of lightning protection. That was what I walked out of there with, is that really the town hall does not have any lightning protection? And that's what you were looking for, was to ground to the lightning.
Can I respond to that?
Yeah, go ahead.
I was seeking lightning protection, because that's normally where you're grounded to. But there is a ground system that's run up to the site, so I can run to that and meet code.
But then really, we missed it at special town meeting, but I thought we were stuck.
It wasn't totally true.
No, but it was the issue of not having lightning protection on the building.
Thank you.
And also the fact that the statement that you got from the company who would be trying to sell lightning protection, saying that your equipment wouldn't attract any additional lightning. So it made it pretty clear for me that, you know, the lightning suppression issue was completely separate from the antenna, or that situation. Where some people are trying to tie it together at town hall, but it's a separate issue.
So I think, are we all in agreement on the board that the steeple condition clause will be, needs to be in there? What you have on now? As the clause being approved, whereby the town is completely held harmless against any and all business laws?
Yes.
Right? Associated with any...
Yes, I think that is the...
Is that the in-number eight, from and against all claims?
Due to negligence, right? I think that was the problem with that wording.
No, it's a list. Oh, I apologize, you're correct.
That's the problem with that wording. So we need to be held harmless regardless of the clause, whether it's negligence, misconduct, omission, et cetera, et cetera, or an act of nature, god, whatever you choose. Or if we say to you, Chris, we get six months to fix the steeple, by the way, or it's gonna fall off, six months, not, it's in the middle of the term, but it's gonna fall off if you got a crack or something now. Then you have to make some provision for that. That's gonna come as a surprise to you, so...
I've, we briefly discussed this topic earlier, and I've discussed it with Stuart, that is just something that I'll be able to work with the building committee on. If they need to replace a column, I will either intentionally not put radios on that particular column or move them before the column is replaced. If, for example, the entire steeple, it was best for the steeple to come down, we can put up a temporary structure, small 20-foot tower up there.
We just don't want to be responsible for those costs, because we'll have enough costs dealing with just our structure ourselves, you know what I'm saying?
Okay.
So somehow, that's what drove me back to the two-year sort of term, is the fact that this would give us a chance to check back, check the temperature all the time back and forth, and say, okay, you made it through the first two years. The second one, we've set aside $20,000 for every year, and now we've gotta do it in the third year, which happens to be in the middle of your second-to-year term. But my thoughts aren't shared, so I respectfully will move on on that. And we know that they won't come.
It will. And the insurance section says to insure them for any loss, any loss as a result of the use of the premises, and to cover the indemnification provisions. So I suspect, I mean, I have no... So I suspect, I mean, I have no reason to hold the town accountable for my loss of business other than I would stop giving you internet service if I could not use this.
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate that, but lawyers get involved, different things.
We need, we need to use tactic and writing.
Okay.
So I think, I think that's a really good point. And then, expand on the restoration bond that you're talking about. I guess I'm...
It says here that he's permitted to restoring the premises to the way he found them, basically. But there's no bond in there. There's nothing that says that if he walks, um, that we have the capacity to remove the antennas, patch the holes, paint the holes, you know, do those sort of things. Uh, it's, it's security. First and last, right, you know, one of these things. Security bond to make sure that we're doing the right business, you know. It makes sense to me.
And, and he's going to be a good businessman. He's going to take care of himself.
He's going to take care of it while releasing the bond.
And the money's going to come back.
Right. And do it over the period of the contract so it's not, doesn't affect his liquidity upfront, you know? Just makes sense to do that sort of thing, I think.
Well, I mean, from the issue licenses in town, they have to put up a bond or a proof. Like that, it's actually very cheap to even buy it, you know? I mean, those are, some of those are pretty high. Brian?
I'm just going to suggest on the, assuming you go ahead with that, that you, um, get some advice from the building committee on the size of the bond required. The technology used to mount those prototypes up there, which I think are actually heavier than the real things. There's no penetration. It's just strapped on.
So usually, it might be smaller, a smaller amount.
I think by a thousand, I'll do it for a thousand.
He's done so much for nothing. He deserves it.
Do you have an issue with putting, putting a deposit down as far as some, some type of bond or?
Over time.
Or?
Once the money really starts rolling in.
Yeah.
So, three years, a hundred dollars a month.
Every...
That would be held in escrow.
I still don't like it.
Huh?
It's hard, it's hard to swallow more expenses at the beginning and...
Hundred and fifty dollars a month in the, in the second.
Twenty-four would just structure it differently somehow.
You know, in the first year, there would be maybe a hundred and fifty dollars a month to whatever. Thirty-six hundred dollars and that, that would just be held in a escrow account to take care of those damages.
The insurance should cover those damages.
Then you get the money back.
No, insurance is a different purpose. If you walk away from the contract and say, I'm out of here, then we have to dismantle all this insurance that's been there for that.
Okay. I see what you're saying there.
Okay.
But if I walk away from all the equipment sitting up there, you guys can sell it on eBay.
Oh, no. You're going to have a lot of unhappy customers. You've got, you're going to need every bit of that equipment.
I, I don't see the need. I mean, I suppose I'd have to think hard about that.
Well, give it some thought. Give it some thought. I mean, it seems to me that it would be, you know, we could structure it any way to try to address this. And just have some money in deposit.
Figure out some way to work with your projected cash flow that would make it work. But you can't rent anything because I'm a security boss, I'm assuming.
Let's think about it quickly, Chris.
Okay.
My plan is that I would like to send this with our notes and what we've discussed back to town council. And next time we meet, we have something that we are so close to signing on that our ends are born.
I'm, I'm...
Am I going down the right road? I mean, do you have an issue with it?
I want to get this thing behind this.
I'm already under the impression I'm offering, based on my research, twice the value of what's up there. Over time continues. So I kind of feel like that relief to the town should effectively cover any potential, uh... Problems or damages or whatever that I... I mean, it's hard for me to say that I walk away from this contract and deal with it because I have no intention of doing so and I, I wouldn't. I mean, who, who would do that?
See, I don't want... Unanticipated bad things happen in business. Completely unanticipated, unforeseen, and in life, bad things happen in life and in business. You may be forced to move to some far-off tropical island somewhere. You might get hit by a bus tomorrow, God forbid, right? Things can happen. It's just the facts of life. The expectation is that you wouldn't walk away from it. The expectation and your hope is that you wouldn't walk away from it. Things are going to be fantastic.
See, that's in a lot of ways is the way you should run a business, right? Every day is a good day.
Well, you're not going to be an entrepreneur if you don't take risks and charge ahead full bore, but you've got to cover your backside too.
Plus, if you, you know, think about it. Call Mary or call me directly if you want, but I want to get this back to town council. I want us to come up with something that we can look at hopefully before the next meeting.
Yeah.
And, uh, we can be in the blocks to do something. What do you think?
Well, I'm going to do it again.
You know, we spent an hour with you so far.
Yeah.
Please make us feel like we won something, right?
There's, there's a list there.
Right. I think the rest of the contract's pretty straightforward and I, I don't really, I see the difference, but I don't see a lot of distinction in what Ron brought up about the fees going back and forth. I think it creates some clutter, you know?
Perception. Yeah, it's perception. It's, it's fine. It's fine.
Well, I'm concerned that Chris just mentioned that he thinks, he's giving the town twice the value. Now, we haven't even signed the contract and he thinks that's his perception. No, but what I'm saying is, he should be getting paid what he's worth. He shouldn't be giving the town a discounted value. The minute it's a discounted value, we're showing favoritism here. And I don't want to do that. This is a business transaction.
Yeah.
Plain and simple. He's going to feel fully satisfied and we've got to feel fully satisfied. And then he's going to provide service to other people. So I'm, I'm really concerned about it.
Wait, where, did you think that was a discount?
Well, you just said, I'm already giving the town twice the value. Those were your words.
Yes.
Why should you give, you're, why should you give the town twice the value of something? Shouldn't you be paid for fair value?
Because it's a potential negotiation. There are no competitors. And I originally thought if I came with, with a reasonable proposal with no risk to the town, uh, where I bear the full monetary risk and offer a reasonable payment, that it would be, we could make a reasonable agreement.
So then you, I'm fine. It's now it sounds like you think you're giving it to the town for the appropriate value because you made a business calculation in your mind.
Well, we had an internet service provider here before the fiber got in and Chris took over.
Yeah.
And what was our fee for that every month?
It was actually somewhat less than it is at the moment because we haven't been able to switch over the phones yet because the IT committee isn't there yet.
So, um, what wasn't included in the phones prior to this?
The internet service provider, sixty. Yeah, fifty-nine, just a second.
But that didn't, that, that included the phone, which this will get turned on as soon as the IT.
Yeah.
So that will be, what's our phone bill?
Another question I had, I didn't document, but thought of right here. Was under your exclusive use provision of the unlicensed band, I don't understand a lot of the technology. If Wire West comes in and they want to tie into that exact contact point where the fiber comes into the town hall, for what I know, is it going to compromise their ability to deliver service to their clients or your ability to deliver service to your client? You don't have exclusive use over the fiber, right?
Correct. And the fiber coming in can handle on the order of two gigabits worth of service. Uh, and I'll be using substantially less than that. And there's several ports, at least twenty-four, that can be provisioned for any. One's going to be for the police. One is, uh, provisioned for, for the town hall use here. And we'll use for, uh, the potential service upstairs. And, uh, plenty more services can share that.
So in layman, in layman towns, two gigabits is?
Orders of magnitude.
Several, several boatloads.
Yes.
Isn't there also, there's another fiber box going into the fire station, which is not being used at all at this point?
A separate one than the town hall.
And that will have twenty-four.
Yeah, that's what Doug was trying to figure out the other, at one of our previous meetings. How do I get connected to that box that's inside the building?
Well, that actually wasn't Doug. That was, that was Doug saying that Doug was fussing about it.
Oh, yeah, okay. I know he heard it somewhere.
But he's actually connected to a town halls.
What do you think about my recommendation that one of us, not me, but one of us, deal with town council, push this thing through and say, marry the effort? Having heard everything that we've heard here, get it back to us in acceptable form. Engage town council on this.
Does that mean you're volunteering?
Not, that means I'm not volunteering.
Oh.
Because I basically differ with you on the first point. And I, and, you know, it is what it is, but I, I don't want to make it appear...
Well, any of us are going to differ. Whoever goes to town council is just going to have to represent the board. I mean, whoever's got time to do it at this point in time. I'm not retired. And I, well, I'm not retired yet.
Oh, you guys.
Oh, sorry. No. I think it's a good idea.
You couldn't be drafted to go sit with Donna?
What'd you just say?
You couldn't be drafted to go sit with Donna?
I could be. But I, I fear that she's going to agree with me and then I have to come back and tell her.
Well, you don't have to argue your point as...
I would not. I would.
I did this, what do you want to do to us? We choose. Uh, see, our next meeting's on the twenty. And I am tied up tighter than tight next week, so I really feel that...
Ron, I, I...
I trust you implicitly to, to talk about both sides of this and what we discussed with the board.
Well, I'll share with you the way it is, that, that, how I felt. I mean, I'll, I'll give you this, this documented fine, and I'll say, you guys feel that we're very comfortable.
I mean, she didn't have an issue with it when she went through and made her notes.
Okay.
Right? She had no issue with it in the discussion. It's not like she says, well, you can't do this. This is going to be a problem.
No, I would say that, that, uh...
In her first draft.
Right. But I would say that Ron, knowing the argues, could, could maybe bring some more depth and details of that discussion.
I'll, I'll fail to represent you there. I'll see if I can do it. She's got a line up in play all the time. I mean, I just got this, uh, Sherry Scott thing recorded after all this time, you know?
Yeah, we're not being the town. And I, and I think one point to bring up is, is Chris's point that this is not a unique situation, that in the industry, this is a reasonable swap. Swapping services.
And that's the same thing I'll be doing with all the pictures of Peter's house.
Can I ask, before we move on, can I ask, what I would do is take hers, take Chris's, take this memo and say, Donna, I need to come in and talk to you. Read up on this. This is, let's sort it out and get one document. I don't know what it's going to look like because it already looks like a Christmas tree between the red and the blue, the project here.
Well, it's, you know, I really think that the key to me is that she didn't have a problem with it in her first draft.
No, no, I'm not even...
You brought up these points. Does that, your item one, A through C there is what, um... Or the fair rap, point two, right?
Right.
A through D, I think that's where we go, you know? Is there an issue? Is it, Donna, is there an issue?
Something you should be doing it. Because what am I going to say? That, that item is, that we agreed on one, three and four, but is there really an issue with two? Can we, can we let it lie the way it's currently on?
Okay. If you want me to do it, I'll do it. I'll do it in the next three days. Because I have to tell you how I make an appointment with Donna.
You are kidding.
Because I've been there before. I know how this works.
If you don't have the time, I'll do it for you.
Look, I can't get it done in the next three days. I won't have the time. I'll let you know. How's that?
That's perfect.
All right? Does that sound fair? All right. How much time did we spend on that one?
An hour and fifteen minutes.
Did we really? Chris, let's get this ground out. I'm still shooting on the twentieth, but we're going to have something. The sign. That's going to be my goal. If we hit it on the twentieth, I don't know, but let's... Anything else that you wanted to bring up before we, it sounds like we're pretty close.
I, I guess I'll try to say something briefly. Uh, one is, the federal government is going to certainly model for everything, but the middle-class tax week and job creation act of two thousand and twelve, uh, they made all the federal property available at cost, unless there was a special need and it could be available below cost for providing wireless services. And I feel any additional cost here is simply going to be paid by the subscribers, which ultimately is some form of tax. And I don't know, I'm, I'm attempting to provide a, a good, low-cost service. And I, I feel like the ability to use the town building to provide that service to the town people, warrants a reasonable, uh, value and a recognition in that any additional cost here is simply passed on to the subscribers. If that's at all helpful or useful.
Makes a lot of good sense to me. We all use the federal government, you know, and normally throw stones at it unless we agree with what's going on.
Yeah.
But no, I, I'll, I'll try to present this as even-handedly as I can. And I'll, I do think, just try to get back to you on that restoration deal. Just, let's try to have something in there. Something.
Yeah.
We don't need all the gold and four bronze, right? All right? Thanks, Chris.
Yeah, we're, we're on the same page. It's just, it always, when you get to the details, it always...
The devil's in the details.
Always slows down, but...
Yeah, I can smell it. So close, we can smell it.
Thanks, Chris.
You all set for the call, Chris? You all set for the fall festival? Never all set for fall festival.
Going home and working it?
You get your, you get your tripod? Upstairs, aren't you gonna put a tripod to that hangout?
Yeah, probably not gonna have time to do it, but it's on my list though. The family comes first, you know?
We said to ask, I told him to talk to Stuart, but he was for fall festivals.
Put a webcam on it.
So they could trace and see where the crowds are and how they move and if there's space that needs to be developed. That was great, that was.
I'm still hoping, but time's tight.
Might could add a few extra hours to each day between now and Friday, right? You might be able to pull it off. All right, yeah, that's why we're meeting now instead of Wednesday, because it'd be hammering and moving and shaking going on. Ted, Chris, Ted Murray, sir, you're next.
It's a pleasure to appear before our select board.
You've been very, you've been very, that's what they all say, that's how I know. I'm gonna select that when they leave.
Of course. I'd like to pass out each of you one page. Right up, that represents just the bare bones of a proposal, or I should say, a request for a proposal. We have a finance committee, the finance committee, I should say, authorized me to solicit written or oral proposals from three different auditing firms specializing in municipal audits for the purpose of implementing our newly formed policy in which we seek to occasionally rotate auditing responsibilities among different firms, so that we don't stay with one firm forever and risk perhaps falling into just kind of ongoing habits and traditions that might not give us the advantage of some fresh highs looking the way we manage our town's finances. So, we're currently being served by Scanlon Associates, and they've been our auditors, I think quite satisfactorily for a number of years. So, we don't have any goals to pick with them, but we would include them among the three firms that we're soliciting as proposals from. The other firm is Melanson Heath, which is based in Greenfield. And there's a third firm called Roselli Clark and Associates, based in Wilburn, Wilburn, Massachusetts. They can use, for example, even though they're in the eastern part of the state, by Conway, Heath, and Hatfield, for example. And these different firms.
Same, different, the same town that Weston and Sampson was in. They're always very happy with Weston and Sampson, you know, with Stuart.
Oh, I didn't realize that, that's before my time, I think fortuitously, so.
I was being a little, I think I was being a little facetious.
We can see, we can tell. Now, what I have to do is just a simply crafted request, and in some way responsive to conversations I've had with two of these firms today, recently today, in which they seem to think if I just ask them the question and send them, for example, the most recent audit that we had, so they can see kind of the scope of what we're talking about, and they know Scanlon and Associates, I'm quite sure. This seemed at first blush to me quite satisfactory, although I've since talked to another advisor who suggests maybe it would be prudent to have our town council approached and ask whether there's some particular format that we ought to go out with for the purpose of soliciting such a request, or soliciting such proposals. And again, I don't know how detailed that needs to be and whether Donna Nichol, for example, has anything that she suggests or not.
I would think for the amount of money we would expect, that it doesn't need to be too fancy, a request for proposals.
I don't think so either. This is not a formal request for bid sort of thing, because it's gonna be typically probably ten thousand dollars in that amount. And I think you gotta be.
Well, things are pressure services too, so it doesn't fall under the same concern.
But, this is the sort of thing that we got through proposals, but technically needs to be brought back to the select board for a decision and kind of an agreement to engage such a firm. So, in some ways, I wanna at least put you on notice that this is what I'm doing and kind of prepare you for getting some such proposals.
There may be discussion about it, actually, over two years.
Yep, yep.
Let me just read it over.
Definitely, that's fine, that's fine. One of the things that I think could be incorporated in here, sure had, was a list of experience, if they've done this for other towns, it'd be nice to know that they're familiar with doing such. I mean, you say Conway, for example, maybe they, I was gonna say submit samples, but that doesn't seem appropriate.
I don't think so.
But they could, they could send us a list.
Yeah. Other municipal clients that we might check with and ask, how were you satisfied with these?
Just a, a list, a list of clients in Franklin and Hampshire County.
Well, the other one sentence I was gonna suggest is that I would add here, would you be able to give us an estimated time to complete such an audit? And the cost of the work? Be a bit more explicit about that, because I'd like to understand what they think it's gonna, how long it's gonna take. Because one of the things I thought we were a little, I was concerned about with Scanlon, they seem to take a long time to put this thing together. By the time you get the results.
You're all, you're ready for natural.
Yeah, exactly. We didn't get our two thousand twelve audit until, I think, June two thousand thirteen. Now, that may be hard for the course, but it seemed long to me. And one of the firms I spoke to, they said, well, if we were to do that with them, they couldn't get started until November, but they could certainly get it by March when they're required to have a process or something. So I thought, that sounded real tight.
I guess my, my question is, and I think we should move forward on it, but I was wondering, would there be a recommendation from local services since they agreed to be here at the end of the month to start doing the, the audit, financial management plan that we, that we moved last two weeks ago?
Yep, I can call in.
I mean, should this go out before or after? Or you should, are they gonna have some recommendations in there on what we should do? Certainly, they're gonna be interviewing us about what we're doing.
Right, but I would think in any case, you'd want an audit for this year two thousand fourteen, irrespective of what condition local services is.
Maybe they will have some recommendations on it, but maybe the audit needs to be more in depth.
Yeah. But I don't think we'd be at a point of having kind of agreed in particular firm until probably the end of October earliest. And we could always modify it, it seems to me. The letters of engagement that these firms provide, they're like twelve-page documents in which they say all the things they're gonna do, the tests they're gonna run, and the rest of it. And we have such a sample from Scanlon, for example. And of course, at the very end, they talk about the price. They go through this kind of long, pretty much boilerplate, set of statements about a management letter, and audits will require these tests and these tests. They make an outside progress, and they do all of kind of perfunctory, I think, explanation of how this engagement will be run. Who's gonna be in charge of it?
So what do we just say, add references, you know, supply us with some references? And what was the other note that you terminated?
Time to complete and the cost, make that explicit, we'd like to know what it's gonna cost.
And I imagine some of that, if they're interested in doing it, they will call Joyce, because they'll wanna know how many accounts are you running.
Sure, yep. They asked that, one of the firms asked that explicitly. We'd wanna talk to your accountant to find out some, some certain figures. Exact number of accounts, the kind of accounts, and so forth.
I, I think for those two additions, that, that was my only question about local services, you know?
Why? And unless we hear differently from Donna, make a little meantime, although I do, let's do this document.
And I mean, I'm gonna try to get in and see, Donna, and I'll ask for better, but I, I really don't, it'll be a very short conversation.
Good.
And I just, I just don't believe there's a reason to ask the question.
Okay.
Now, this is just a.
Okay.
If we can hold off till next week, I'll be able to tell you over the weekend if I made it.
Okay, fine. All right, good.
Do you have any comments on it? I think it's great, I think it's great, I think it's, what?
We've been shooting for the last point four months.
All right, anything else?
All good. All's well.
You came in a little late.
Yeah, but I was out of the room, you guys started spending money, though, that sounds like a frustration.
Before we, they, they tried to pull themselves back as soon as you came in.
Good night, Donna.
Good night. All right, now we're finally getting into some new business.
Is this an update? Is this?
Corey policy, I'm looking for mine. Here it is. Where are we? We got the Corey policy.
We've got, we each got a copy of it.
Todd was just asking, is this an update we've had one or we've never had?
No, we have never had one. We need to adopt one so that we can have a Corey officer, will be, treasure, who will be able to run checks and broker checks and that sort of thing.
You said that last part again? So that they can do what?
Yeah, run checks where it's required for certain kinds of employment to be able to deal with elders or whatever. Will be able to solve.
Is this, where, where did we generate this? Is this boilerplate?
This is, yes, it is. It's boilerplate from the site where you register to be a, the Corey officer. And, but it said before you can finish the form, you have to have a policy in place before you can complete to get, to become authorized.
Where does this go, if I can ask? Where, where does it reside? Is this in the personnel manual?
I think it would, it, it could, you know, there could be copies in a number of places, but it would probably stay with the.
Authorized.
So it would probably stay with the.
You, you mean the policy?
Yeah, the policy.
The policy itself.
But shouldn't it be something that's more transparent, like the line of DM book or something like that?
It can go wherever we want it to, this is really in order to get. Yeah, to meet the requirement to have somebody authorized, but it can be wherever we want.
And we need to have someone authorized.
We do.
For.
Yes.
Here's another thing, like the Dunk, we've been missing doing it for a number of years. Doesn't look like this will be quite as expensive as the Dunk. No.
Doesn't the police department handle all the?
Police departments don't often do it.
Because some of the information that comes out of that.
Well, that's why you.
Unless they restrict the amount of information.
That's why you have to have a policy, only one designated person is authorized through the process.
Police isn't gonna do all the Corey checks on school bus drivers or people working with the elderly or that sort of thing. Whang?
Her question is, is valid up till two and a half years ago, when this police department was informed they no longer could do it by the state. I lied for Corey check for drivers, and at that time, we found out that they had just passed a law, or a regulation, removing that authority from the police.
And probably their reasoning was, who is.
Pardon?
The reasoning probably was, they probably trust the police to do it.
I don't know what the reasoning was. Diane, in the name of the dead chief, spent over a month and a half back and forth with them trying to find out their reason. And at the end, it was, we do not allow to do it, period, and restart.
We had a chance to read it over that one?
I have, I've read it over, yeah.
Good question, I'm going. Yeah, it looks like boilerplate. This is gonna enable us to have a duly designated officer?
Yes.
Who would be that officer?
Our treasurer, oh.
If the treasurer's gonna be the one that keeps all the personnel file.
Makes sense.
That's why, that's why I found, I'm very stimulated with that.
So if we need a Corey check on a driver or senior's van or something like that, let's go to R and say, run a Corey check. And all she would do is say that person passes here, or doesn't pass. We're not entitled to know that information, are we? So, is there a, then we have to update the treasurer's job responsibility to be the Corey officer, right?
Well, although the job descriptions do have, do say this is not an exhaustive list, and we could put that in at some point.
Remember, we're going through the personnel policy, we're gonna be doing that over the next two weeks. And, but we've already added quite a few things on who was responsible, so the files weren't in one place, and it seems like everything's kind of directing towards the treasurer.
But we have to remember to add Corey officer to that list, right?
The next two Wednesdays.
Fifteen from the twenty.
So I'll make a motion to accept this document, Town Vasco, Massachusetts Corey policy. Most likely should have a footer on it, that you're talking about. We all look like Dr. Hirsch, we have a footer.
All the stuff should.
And to accept this policy and designate the treasurer as the town's Corey officer. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll give the favor say aye. All right, election. I thought we'd just sign an election law.
Well, is this for you, that was for the primaries, this is for the general?
This is for the big one.
Thank you. Todd, can I have this?
All these elections, I hope they keep the big book with all the records of it. Attorney General, that's by busy things, everywhere on top. The Attorney General would enforce the proposed law. I feel bad, I haven't even brought myself up to date on all the questions.
These are all of them, right?
Yeah.
Where are the other round questions?
Oh, they're all in this package.
Oh, okay.
Now I can head back. So. Okay, in your folders tonight, we had Mary, she won a vote beyond when I was.
Then we skipped over B, I think.
What did I do?
DR, unless you want to just sign.
Oh, oh, the authorization, go ahead. Yeah, let's do that, that's money. Right, skip over. Got so many abbreviations. This is authorization number two and you gave me authority to sign, but this is a second disbursement out of the grant for Sniffer Road. And so the, this invoice is five thousand nine hundred and eighty. Which is engineering every day, you know?
Yes. Design impermeable.
Yes, design impermeable, five thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. The one we signed before was sixteen hundred dollars. Just wanted to bring you guys up to. Tommy was in here, we didn't even ask him about the brayer. They're both, you know, just work the street, they were settling in. They don't stay throwed out.
Yep.
Well, that's why, that's why they've got the west side of town done.
I still don't know. I still haven't seen any stop sign though.
Well, we should have checked him on that. Alright, in your folder, I had Mary pull together the job description that she's working under now. Plus she has so we can look at it and discuss it at a future meeting, it seems a lot to review right now. But town, between executive administrator and town administrator job descriptions that a lot of the other communities, I was thinking Conway and Buckland and she got a hold of Shelworth and Bloomsburg also. So kind of give you an idea of what the difference is.
I don't think I got that.
I've got that, oh, no, I think I did.
Maybe I just grabbed mine.
Possibly.
But this, this really is, the only reason I put it on the agenda is since we finally stumbled our way through the police department, the police chief, that maybe we can start stumbling through the next one. And if there is looking at the descriptions and if there's a sizable difference, which I, I believe me scanning at the first blood. If there's a big enough difference and if it seems like it's somewhere we need to go, we have to at least be thinking about that before we really put it right. Does that make sense?
I won't know until I see it.
No, no, well, this is for you to review, so I want to bring it up at the next meeting, but I just wanted to get this out here before you take. We've had a town administrator in the past. So we have a reason we.
You have yours.
I do have. So I just want to review it and give you guys time to review it while you rest them and we'll put it on the agenda for next week to kind of compare. When you rest them?
Yeah.
Yeah. Good luck to you and the Red Sox. We were one of the first towns that got grants and so forth to have a town administrator and then we got backed away from it to this executive administrator position and I just noticed that every other town, I mean, you don't have to only pick up a paper of people who replaced them and making degrees a bit more extensive and and I really wonder if we're not. If we're missing something or maybe we're quite satisfied in all we're doing. I am very cognizant of what I'm reading about what these other towns, you know, they really have to belly up to the bar to, to come up with the money for the types of people that they hire. But you don't have to go to very many meetings to, you know, you get to talk to people to decide what's going on. There's a meeting, I believe it's the Massachusetts Selectman's Association on October 25th in Franklin, Mass. And Mary, can you sign me up for that? It's a Saturday, it's a Saturday meeting.
Twenty fifth? Twenty fifth?
In Franklin.
I'm looking at twenty sixth, but not the twenty fifth. I avoided the twenty sixth because I'm sure it's a season, but I could be persuaded.
Well, what I kind of got to figure out is I can probably work that on the twenty fourth and be down there.
Yep.
That's my plan, right, after the presentation that wouldn't do, but if it's something you want to go to, we all got a meeting on that.
Yeah.
And, and one of the topics in there is you know, the town administrator duties and that sort of thing, so I guess I wanted to get a little more knowledge on what the difference is.
Does anyone want to see it, does anyone else want me to sign it up?
I think there was no cost to that, or was there?
No, it's maximum useful.
Is it maximum? I thought it was selectmen's association.
It's maximum.
It's a fun. I'm not close to going to.
To going?
To going, but.
Well, I think it's fine if we end up writing together as long as we pinky swear not to talk.
I might, I might stay down there. I might stay down there, try to let it happen.
Well, let's communicate on it. I don't think they'll kick us out if we show up at the door, we haven't signed that, but.
I think I have that email still.
Do you want to just sign it up?
I, I won't create, yeah.
How about the other one?
If I didn't show up, I'd hate to be in that person. Go ahead.
Alright. Mary, are you equipped to lead us in discussion on this pipeline intervenor status discussion?
Not a lot, I think, did I put in your folders a little bit of an information sheet for intervenor status and a couple of the letters you received? On the issue. Not finding that. So if you're an intervenor, allow you to comment and further down the road challenge any decisions made by the process. I believe I understand that they are at the pre-registration stage with FERC, Federal Energy Regulation Regulatory Commission and that you have twenty one days, I think, for us to be there, final registration.
It's a shame they couldn't print this a little, the computer couldn't print this a little smaller.
Yeah, sorry. So as an intervenor, you can participate in hearings. File briefs, you can file for rehearing of a commission decision, an ad legal standing of court appeals.
Intervener gives you the right to challenge FERC's decision in court. Non-interveners cannot take the FERC to court.
Now, there are costs involved, so it's been suggested that if Asheville is interested, we try to find a couple of other towns who are interested. You need a regulatory lawyer.
You need what?
A regular, regulatory lawyer.
To do the filing? To do the filing?
And I've heard a figure of twelve hundred dollars as a
Retainer, so that means your first capital.
Agent with a retainer, yeah, exactly. But I have not been able to get a defendant estimate on it. What happened? Of course beyond that, I suppose we depend on what happens.
I wish we had asked Jim Cooper some opinion on this. Because he's pretty even minded on his opinion on this status and I'm not really knowledgeable on it.
I was, my thought was, if another number of towns were to get together and file as one in support of a lawyer, wouldn't the FERC?
They were going to apply for intervening status, Bill Broom told me that, but I don't know if they did, so that's a good question. We're members of FERC, so are we then?
I mean, the council originally said, I go to council meetings and they originally said that they were going to try to stay neutral so that they could.
Go after intervening status.
Well, also play a different role in getting information and hosting events and so forth. But let me check.
Is there a dead light to this?
As I say, I believe that it's twenty one days after the formal filing.
And they filed how long ago?
Well, I don't think that was the formal.
No, that's not the form, this is a pre-file.
Pre-file.
I mean, yes.
Expedited file, filing. I thought they got that.
I think it was expedited, the way I read it was expedited, pre-file on status. Which means they could bring their actual filing. Not in two months instead of six months or some such thing like that.
And in the the issues that were raised about their pre-filing application, that they use such outdated maps was one of the points brought up, that there's all kinds of things in the way now that weren't there in nineteen eighty when the maps.
So one of the things I can do, I haven't done it yet, is you can go on the site and register to be notified when it's filed formally.
And you've already done that?
I haven't done it, I thought I'd get to it today, but I.
I didn't, seriously.
I'll do it tomorrow.
But let's.
What about contacting other towns too?
Well, I kind of think if we contacted FERC, they should have a pretty good handle on that, I would hope. So I would think that would be the first thing to do is drop a dime. Drop a dime to FERC and I suppose Plainfield and Conway.
Yeah, I was going to take.
Those are the ones on each side of us. Certainly is an important issue in town. Alright. Liaison reports, Todd, you were pretty well covered there with Tom coming in.
I guess the one thing that I have is, I remember you see, I remember these guys had a dam for their every two year inspection of the dam. They told me that this was going to be coming, this is a hydrology and hydraulics analysis. Did you already talk about the? I did, it was kind of a cursory, pre-formal one.
And you talked about the free board.
Yeah, and this came. And I think it's probably important enough to talk about what, and this just arrived on the it says October third, but I would have hoped that they would come and represent this themselves to us. Because there's a section in here that they've asked us to get back to them on and this is summary of alternatives. And it relates to that three board issue and there's three or four different options. Some of them make more sense to me than others, but I was looking for a little more handholding, so I would suggest that we either get this on the next meeting or the meeting after and give me a chance to connect with Ty and Bond and see if they'll come up here and represent this.
Which I believe they can make it too, we'll put that on the agenda and we'll put them on first thing.
Okay, so I will contact them and get back to you, they might say it's, it's really quite simple and they don't need to be here, but we'll.
I have an engagement. We should encourage them to be here.
I'll try to get first source.
And if we have it first thing, you know.
Get them in and out of here.
So, that sounds.
That's it. Because the, the free board, we came up with that definition, that actually very easy, but.
The crest of the crest of dam, of the spillway of this, no?
Oh, yeah.
The dam of the stone dam, not the masonry dam. Spillway.
Side. The dyke.
The dyke.
The whole thing.
Yeah.
So that says, in the event that you have a major storm event and all this water is going over the concrete dam.
Right.
And it's rising and it's rising and rising, at what point does it go over the dyke?
Yeah.
That's the free board, the difference between when it first steps forward over the concrete dam and when it steps forward over the dyke. And that's where the catastrophe happens, that's when it goes over, that, that overtaking becomes a disaster, just washes out. If there's like six inches, maybe six, six more? If the number, if there is a number and it varies places.
And it tied into the culvert side coming across one twelve.
As long as it stayed the same. As long as it stayed the same, so let me get back to none of this, get back to you guys.
When the free board, probably most of the time is, is great because it gets smaller because the dealers building.
Or if you make smaller dollar. Make another league. I don't think what actually is, probably wanting to go in the way with the culvert side of this.
I don't have anything on liaison reports except that Dell could make it tonight on the fire department, so he'll be on the next agenda also. Anything else? Mail?
Mail.
I can't imagine what you get for mail, but we don't get an email since the box is full so much.
Yeah, so let's see, we got the reply from DLSS and we started, ended up, started to contact to get it started.
I, I was really amazed that that reply came so fast. Two weeks ago? We signed it, got faxed in or scanned in and emailed and within a few days.
September twenty fourth. Also, we did get a copy back for the record, it's a letter that Donna sent with her signature, she said you wanted to return a copy, so that came along.
Say that again, the copies of the?
The, the letter that Donna sent about right away and remember at the last meeting you said you wanted to return a signed copy for the record? For the record.
For the right away for the gas, that's one deal.
Oh, okay. Oh, yes, did we get anything back relative to Sheriff Scott, parking lot agreement?
I haven't seen that.
Okay, that should be coming.
I haven't seen anything. It's a town in Buckland, letter supporting the Asheville final committee letter.
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw that.
Right, I think sometimes I just scan these things and so I've seen it, um. I think. I don't know if I, I can't. Todd, can I? You got a, that's a good back one. You got a letter from town of Colville also supporting the finance committee. That's it. I just can't remember that one.
Yeah, that's in our file.
Okay, mail. Can't think of any items. It is five minutes of eleven. Public comment, any public comment? Good. Our next meeting is a select board meeting, is the twentieth. But remember that we're meeting with the personnel board next Wednesday.
At seven?
At seven o'clock. Right here. I did get an email today from Priscilla that it sounded like she had decided that we were working through the manual in the way that it was written and didn't it sound like she wanted to skip something and go to benefits?
She'd like to start with benefits next because she feels that's what is used most. Functionally written, you got to miss. So she'd like to, and she came in at seven, do benefits next week and, um, a couple of new policies that have been written in, uh, in computer use and bullying policy. Like to do those next week and then on the twenty second, go back and finish through. We may start that on the fifteenth.
Cause I think we left off.
Yep.
I think we left off just before agreements, didn't we?
Yep.
That agreement section, so we're skipping ahead or skipping further into the book to do benefits and then coming back, so. I mean, as long as it all gets done and it can all get incorporated and we keep track of it, I was just kind of surprised that we were. I don't, I don't think so. I think it's a big difference. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second, any discussion, seeing none, all those superiors say aye.
Aye.